Mr. Mayor.
We start meetings on time around here. Duly noted. As you're ready. All right, but we're going to call, reconvene the open session with the announcement from our city attorney in open session, Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the city council entered closed session to discuss four separate items identified on the agenda. The city council gave direction. There's no reportable action taken.
Thank you, sir. With that, we adjourn our adjourned regular meeting and roll into our city council meeting. Welcome, everyone. Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, our council meeting. The first thing we always start with our city, the best part of our day, is the Pledge of the Fact. Tonight, we're going to have Tessa Smith come up and lead us on the pledge. Tessa, where'd she go? There she is. Come on, Tessa. Come up here. Been here before. Hold it. Close your mouth, and we follow you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't go anywhere yet. We don't go anywhere. So, to be honest, I had to find someone that couldn't get for school start. They leave our pledge, so I asked Angie, her mother, Kakavara, her daughter, for our pledge. She goes, "I've already been here and done that before." So it's like, okay, but now it's special because it's just you. So, Tessa, point out your friends and family that are here.
That is my mom. Um, I go to MBMS Middle School.
What's your favorite subject? What do you want to talk about?
Um, I like my first period class the most, which is like math art. It's like cool.
And did you miss being on vacation? You'll be happy back in school?
Yes.
Good to be there?
Yep.
The coach, you were so gracious with your time. We're going to, on behalf of the council... We're going to give you this. Certificate of Reco- you have one of these. Certificate of Recognition. City Council recognizes you, Tessa Smith, for leading the city council and the community in the Pledge of Allegiance dated today, December 5th, 2023. Hold that up there. And you get the Much Fawn and Thinking Bear with different thinking, the city pen. You want your mom in this picture or just council?
Just council.
Just council? All right, council. Here we go. Here you go, Mom. Council colleagues. We're going to stand next to you.
Yeah, you stand up like that. That's good. Look at that.
But what does it do for me then? Ready?
All right, ready. One, two, three. Go up here. Got it.
Congratulations. Normally, we have a teacher come brag about Tessa, but because of school year and organized, we got to Tessa before that actually happened. Thank you, Angie. Appreciate that. With that, let's move to roll call, please, Lisa.
Councilmember Haworth?
Here.
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano? Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here as well.
Next up, we're going to recognize our ceremony calendar, presentation of certificates of recognition for Manhattan Beach certifying green businesses.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Want to do adjournment now? All right. Folks, we're going to go out of order. We're going to adjournment for one of our longtime city employees that we lost recently. So bear with us. In the evening, we do an adjournment. We're going to go out of order and do it now. All right, so I'm going to ask you all to please rise when I read this. The family, the family is here in attendance. Picture you see behind me, the loss of Carl Blank the Third, Public Works Inspector. After long, successful career owning his own custom millwork company and crafting custom furniture and cabinetry throughout Los Angeles County, Carl Blank the Third began the next phase of his professional career when he became a Public Works Inspector. Carl brought his skills as a craftsman and attention to detail to public works construction. He started with the city of Manhattan Beach Public Works Department in 2014 and retired in May of 2023. He passed away on July 28th. Carl brought a passion for his work and thoroughly enjoyed working for the city. He was always courteous and professional in his dealings with property owners and contractors working throughout the city, and earned their respect as a tough but fair inspector. Carl's always had a smile on his face and an upbeat demeanor, and could tell you the best place to eat lunch anywhere in Los Angeles County, which is true. I'll second that. He was a devoted family man and had a fondness for dogs. There's not a dog in Manhattan Beach that he did not remember. Carl left his mark on everyone he came in contact with at City Hall and left his mark on construction throughout the city. Carl worked on many significant development projects, including the Manhattan Beach Village Mall expansion, the Skechers expansion, the new Gelson's Grocery Store, the Canetka slash Duncan Development Site, and of course, his significant contributions working with the various utility companies and the city. Carl is can always be remembered every time you go to C-Hall, as Carl built the receptionist desk. The city thanks Carl Blank the Third and his family for all his contributions in making Manhattan Beach a better place to live, work, and visit. Our thoughts are with Carl's family as they go through this difficult time. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you to his family. Our condolences up here behind this by the wall. Let you know that we have some paperwork for you, recognition from the city, and our condolences going forward. But thank you for being here. Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, folks, we're back to our normal scheduling with ceremony calendar, and we're going to talk about those green businesses we have in our city. And Martha, I'm looking at your list here to make sure I've got the same list you have for green businesses. But a report from Daniel, the staff's going to start me off. Daniel?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Daniel Pankow. I'm the new Environmental Programs Administrator. Happy to be here. And, uh, tonight, we will be recognizing 11 businesses that have met the California Green Business Network certification and/or recertification requirements. Uh, the Green Business Certification Program is managed by Waste Management as a part of its franchise agreement with the city. These businesses have gone above and beyond to implement programs to conserve our natural resources. Some examples are installing LED lighting, participating in the city's green waste and recycling programs, installing low-flow airators for faucets, reduced use of disposable products, switching to eco-friendly cleaning products, and use of Energy Star efficient appliances. And the following are the list of the 11 businesses. Um, they're up there. I don't know if I should read them now or if we want to do it one by one.
You're going to read them all? How many come up? Stand with me here at the podium right behind me.
Okay, sounds good. So first, we have MBS Media Campus. Second is Pacifica Properties Group. Third is Pure Bean Coffee. Next is Children's Orchard. Hammett. Vanquish Media Group. Gum Tree. Go ahead and come up to the front, guys, please.
Don't be shy. You all get one.
Audrey Judson Homes. Round Willow Yoga. Body in Balance. And lastly, Hi-Fi Espresso. Please come to the front. Thank you.
Who's here for Gum Tree? Yes, well, we're done. We'll handle the first. You get the second right behind you. Gum Tree's here? All right. Don't go very far. Round Willow Yoga? No one here for yoga today? Hammett?
Yeah.
All right, sir. Good to see you. Thank you for being here.
Yoga is coming right now.
Children's Orchard? Children's Orchard? I was going to say. Pacifica Properties Group? Pure Bean Coffee? They made great coffee, too, by the way. And Hi-Fi Espresso? Just Hi-Fi Espresso. So we're seeing yoga and espresso. Everybody else is here? So I know, you want to take a picture once Angel's done? Want to take a picture of the group and then...
Okay.
Alex will take one of us from the front. Everybody will look towards that podium once she's done the picture up here. Yeah. Some big, these door cut. Got your attention there. So, Ally, from up there, roll. Look up, look at that second level.
Ready? One, two, three. Got it.
Congratulations.
I know. We, we took quite a few of those guys. Seemed to be the, the best place for the getaway cars for the bank robberies. No, it is, because 27th Street, we're like dead across from all the banks, and so all of the getaway cars, like, park right next to our parking lots. So the city was like, can we put a camera there? We're like, yeah, sure. Actually, no. Oh, can you do it sideways? Thank you.
Is there anything else? You want to wash your car?
You guys can add cameras to the front of the store, too, if you want. Yeah, absolutely. It was a win-win.
Ah, she said third.
Only because of my good A.
I know, and I have no room over here.
Trying to get current out of the way. There we go. Perfect smile. Come on, get one over there.
Have room for one more?
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, folks.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah. I've got that. Now, everybody's quieted down a minute. Something we started, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin, I started a while ago. Was it February, March? I think of last year, Joe. I can forget March. I want to recognize all the veterans that are here. Most of you, I know, besides Rick Fair, a lot of veterans are here. So I recognize all veterans, current active military, and current military reservists. Would you all please stand and be recognized? Chief, there's two. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. We honor those who make a possible for us to be here tonight. Thank you. I know the chief, when she's here, at least I get one person to recognize while we're here. That's an automatic one. Thank you, chief. That's good. With that, let's move to item E, Pooled Agenda and Waiver of Full Reading of Ordinances. Counsel?
Question, the city manager Bruce. Do you have a question to comment from an item number nine? I may just pull it for explanation. Circle number nine for me. Number nine. And number 10 for Councilor Napolitano.
So items nine and 10. Mine's just a clarification issue.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, item 14, we'd like to continue to the next meeting.
Item 14, continue to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Nine, 10, and 14. 14 will be for the future meeting. I have a, need a motion. Oh, councilman. I see a first by Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin and a second by Councilman Mayor Haworth. Voting screen, please.
Motion passes five zero.
Great. Our next item up, city council and community organization announcements, upcoming events. The city manager, do you want to start this one off?
Yes, I, I would, actually. Uh, I'd like to ask Public Works Director Eric Lee to come down, uh, and say a few words about uh, the city response to Hurricane slash Tropical Storm Hillary from a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I unfortunately, or some people said fortunately, were out of town, uh, the day that storm came through, and Eric was the acting city manager in my absence, and Eric and I were in touch with each other, obviously. But, uh, I am so proud of the response that the city had for that event. Uh, it was, uh, something we obviously haven't experienced here in 80 some odd years with that type of, of wind and rain event. Uh, but I think the response that the city had, uh, from our new emergency preparedness coordinator, Amanda, who, uh, you'll hear from, I think, at the next meeting, uh, on another topic, but she was instrumental. And thank you again for allowing us to hire that position. Uh, as I said many times in the past, this is a, a needed area for us, and Amanda proved her worth and is setting us up well for emergency response in the future. Uh, but with that, I, I wanted Eric to talk a little bit about the city's response, because one of the things that made me the most proud was how the staff did not let anything get in the way, impede our progress in serving the community, and whether it was, uh, making sure that sandbags were obtained and filled, uh, making sure that our employees were taken care of between shifts so that they could be well rested and continue the response, uh, to, you know, just making sure flooding didn't happen and, and down trees were addressed and so many of those things. So I've asked Eric to give this report because he was in charge, and frankly, he did a marvelous job leading the team, and, uh, I'd like you to hear from him exactly what all we did. So thank you.
All right. Director Flores, yours.
All right. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. Um, I'm Eric Lee, your Public Works Director. And as Mr. Mo mentioned, um, I was the acting city manager, uh, when we had Tropical Storm Hillary come through the Southland. Really, I'm just going to give you, uh, I think, what I'm hoping is a, a high-level blow-by-blow of how the, um, three or four days that we were dealing with the storm went, and you could see how the city staff responded. Um, on Wednesday, August 16th, uh, we been, began tracking the storm. Uh, I remember calling, uh, Chief Lang and, and, and saying, "What's, what's going on?" And, um, we heard the hurricane is coming in through Mexico. And so that was, uh, when we started getting on this. Um, ended up being a tropical storm once it hit Southern California, um, and the first one we had in 84 years. Um, the forecast, um, around Wednesday or Thursday, uh, was torrential rains, uh, with sustained winds, uh, to strike over the weekend. Um, and so obviously, that, uh, gave us, uh, concern, not only, uh, for just the general welfare of the city, uh, but also we had the added complexity of the AVP event, um, in town that weekend with tens of thousands of visitors, um, right on the coastline. Um, and so immediately, uh, really started working on this. By, by Thursday, our emergency preparedness administrator, Amanda McLennan, um, and our community engagement manager, Ally LaChania, um, were working with Chief Gomes, uh, our division chief at the police department, uh, to track the storm and help develop plans. Um, and our response over the weekend was, um, really, um, the work that the three of them did was instrumental in making sure that the city could, uh, respond well. And so, uh, we were very fortunate to have, uh, those talented people on our staff. Um, one of the opportunities we identified early on is, um, uh, with the volleyball tournament in town, uh, we had overstaffing in the fire department and police department already scheduled to be in town for the weekend. So we knew we would have, um, adequate public safety resources. Um, in Public Works, uh, we placed most of our field staff on standby for the weekend, uh, to make sure that they were able to respond at a moment's notice. Um, on Friday, we continued to track the storm, um, and, uh, maintained close contact with the police department, fire department, and Parks and Rec, um, especially with the AVP organizers. Uh, we had excellent partnership with AVP, and they understood the public safety needs of this community and, uh, event goers. Uh, and they were committed to ending the event early if necessary, um, and, uh, I think, you know, frankly, at, at a potential loss for them, uh, because it would be the right thing to do. Um, in the meantime, Public Works crews prepared sandbags, cleaned catch basins, and cleared roof drains of city facilities. Uh, we also brought in teams from, um, from home on Friday, um, in the afternoon and the evening to help out with this work. Um, on Saturday, our city leadership team met throughout the day via Zoom to report on the storm, um, preparations, and review the latest information that we're getting from the National Weather Service, uh, and, uh, County, uh, Office of Emergency Management. At that point, the refined fo- forecast showed that the bulk of the storm would arrive between noon on Sunday and peaking later, late, uh, that evening. And so, um, as city manager Mo mentioned, uh, he and I consulted, um, and, uh, in meeting with our leadership team, we decided to open the EOC, um, officially on Sunday morning. Um, and we worked with AVP, um, and they advised that they'd be running their brackets late and, on, on to Saturday, and then starting early on Sunday to conclude the tournament by noon on Sunday. Um, and then throughout the day on Saturday, we continued major sandbag operations at the yard. So, um, as most of you knows, we ran out of sandbags, um, and we had crews, um, with our heavy equipment, uh, getting sand off the beach, bringing it, uh, to our parking lot. And, um, while we were filling sandbags, uh, if you wanted to build your own, you could do that as well. And so we were trying to make it, uh, as accessible to the community as possible. And, um, our, our weekend lead indicated it was like in and out parking lot, um, in, in the yard that day. There were so many people. Um, by Sunday morning at eight o'clock, uh, we opened the EOC, uh, with all of our disciplines represented. Um, we had additional staff, um, supporting remotely, um, some while on vacation from out of state. Um, we had hybrid meetings throughout that day, um, and AVP wrapped up, uh, before noon, um, as, uh, they, they promised to us. Um, and, uh, the, the first bit of, uh, real storm impacts, um, became, um, seen on Sunday, um, most notably at 27th Street and 29th Street and the tree section. Uh, we've got active construction over there. Um, and, um, some of that was not buttoned up correctly and was causing a, a mud flooding issue. Um, and so that road was closed, uh, for about 24 hours. Um, our contractor responded and ultimately mitigated that work. About noon, uh, Mayor Montgomery and Mayor Pro Tem Franklin arrived at the EOC to ensure that we had all the conditions and resources necessary, uh, to respond properly to the community. Um, and it was right about that time, uh, that staff was realizing, um, especially on the public works side, well, I, I think it's only on the public works side, that we had, uh, a lot of people working, helping out, and we were looking at our available resources for the evening when the storm's really going to come in, um, and we were going to be in deficit. Um, and so essentially, we were too heavy in, in the day and, uh, not enough in reserve in the evening. Um, and so, uh, there was more complexity of that because the heavy rains were anticipated to be in the evening, and we were concerned that if we had, um, crew members trying to come in from, um, outside the city, that potentially they wouldn't be able to, based on the forecast. Um, and so, uh, we made the decision that we, uh, wanted to keep crews, you know, in or near the city, and made arrangements for about one-third of our crew that was on staff during that day, um, who had been already working about eight to 10 hours already, um, to get eight hours of rest and then resume work at 10 o'clock. Um, so we began looking for hotel accommodations locally for them. Um, and Mayor Pro Tem Franklin became aware of, of that effort, um, and he has, uh, a very close connection, uh, with, with West Drift, um, and was able to get, um, six of our employees in, in a hotel room, really on a moment's notice. Um, and we were able to pull them off the line, um, get, get them some needed rest, um, and they ultimately came back, um, about eight hours later at 10 o'clock that night.
Good thing I had a lot of points.
And so, um, that was really instrumental in making sure Public Works was going to be, um, ready to, to respond, um, i- in, in the late night and early morning hours of, of Monday. Um, that night, as I mentioned, our Public Works Night Shift arrived at 10, uh, for storm patrol duties. Our emergency preparedness administrator, Amanda, kept the EOC operating all night long, um, liaising with police and fire and our Public Works crews. And then on, come Monday morning, uh, the bulk of our EOC staff resumed at 8 o'clock in the morning. Um, and we assessed what we were dealing with. And so, um, obviously, we were prepared for the worst and, and quite frankly, feared the worst. Um, and found that we, we had some tree limb failures, but really no, um, extensive tree damage. Uh, we had some significant power loss, um, uh, especially on the east side of the city, that I, I think, uh, within 12 to 24 hours, most of that was resolved by Edison. Uh, the biggest issue we had with the power outage is, uh, we have some vulnerabilities at a storm drain lift station that the council has, um, heard about in the past at 23rd and Peck. Um, but our staff had proactively prepared for that, and so we had a generator, um, already stationed at the location. And when we lost power, uh, we had a trained electrician on standby, um, that was in the city that night and was, uh, able to skillfully make that transition to generator power and prevented significant flooding in that area. And so we were very fortunate for the work that he did. Um, and, and that was about all we found. Um, and so by 1 o'clock on Monday, uh, we officially closed the incident down from the EOC level. Um, and, uh, the bottom line is the city fared extremely well. Uh, we were fortunate we didn't have near the same impacts that some communities inland had. Um, and really is a great testament to the interdependence and dependability of city staff. And so, you know, in the emergency management community, there's a saying, "The only thing harder than preparing for disaster is explaining why you didn't." And I think we were a really shining example of that, is that, um, you know, were we, uh, prepared for this? Yes. Were we overprepared? Perhaps, um, and a great position to be for the city of Manhattan Beach. Uh, we learned a lot from this incident. Um, we, we have a new, uh, emergency preparedness administrator that is going to be quarterbacking an after-action report to see, uh, lessons learned, um, and how we can, uh, improve in the future. Um, and so you really want to thank, uh, council for its support, um, over that long weekend to make sure that we had, uh, the ability to properly respond. Um, city manager Mo for, um, his guidance from afar. Um, and, you know, special thanks to all of our staff, all of our department heads. Um, really, um, everyone was available and everyone contributed. Um, and as I mentioned, you know, special thanks to emergency preparedness, uh, administrator Amanda McLennan and community engagement manager, Ally LaChania. Um, this is, this is a great team effort.
It was. I think congratulations for doing that. Thank you. Now pull the comment, please.
City Council, my name is Margot Powell. I'm a senior at Miracosta, and I'm also serving as the student body president. We hope everyone is ready to mark their counters. We are excited that the Miracosta Drama Tech Department has announced their fall and spring performances. From November 3rd to 11th, students will perform and Peter and the Star Catcher. And the department will also present Footloose the Musical on April 26th and 27th and run from May 1st through the 4th. Thank you.
Well done, Margot.
Hi. My name is Sophia Delano, and I'm also a senior at Miracosta, and I'm also this year's student body vice president. Our school year has been off to a great start, and we're really excited for our future. Miracosta is hosting a blood drive on September 21st from 8:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. in our athletic complex. It is open to all of Miracosta community, including students and adults. We're also looking forward to Homecoming, which is October 27th. I'm also excited to share that I will be serving as one of the new MBUSD student board members.
Congratulations, Sophia. Way to go. Well done. Our next public speaker. Oh, come on, there's Josh.
Uh, hi. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. The Evening Book Club will meet on Monday, September 11th at 6:30 to discuss The Golden Spoon by Justin Maxwell. When production for the hit cooking competition Bake Week begins at the Gothic Estate... When production for the hit cooking competition Bake Week begins at the Gothic estate of the show's host, celebrity chef Betsy Martin, everything seems normal. The contestants are eager to provide their culinary or prove their culinary talents, but when baking competition gets underway, things go awry. At first, it's merely sabotaged sugar replaced with salt or a burner turned on high, but when someone shows up dead, suddenly, everyone's a suspect. Again, this adult program will take place on Monday at 6:30 p.m. at Manhattan Beach Library. And did you know that September is library card signup month? So, in the month of September, while supplies last, anyone who signs up for a card can get this lovely book bag and a pencil case. So, if you're one of the very, very few people who don't have a library card in Manhattan Beach, come by the library in September while supplies last. Thank you.
Awesome, Josh. Way to go. Thank you for doing that.
Thanks.
Our next speaker?
This is community announcements, right?
Public announcements, yes, community announcements. Hey, Chief.
Hey. Good evening, Mayor Montgomery, members of the council. Rachel Johnson, your police chief. I just wanted to invite the community to a rabies vaccination event that we are having this Friday in the PD's community room from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. So, if you have a pet that is in need of a vaccination, please join us. There's more information. These flyers that you see on the screens are available on the city's calendar, but if you are in need of a vaccination or licensing for your pet, please join us on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else for community announcements? Ah, there's one.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. I just wanted to invite the community to come out to the Strand Park Horse Ribbon Cutting. It will be next Tuesday, September 12th at 3:00 p.m. And I wanted to give a special shout out to the MB 10K Board for their generous donation of all of the equipment, and also to the Public Works team who did a spectacular job. They did all the installation in-house and really beautified the area. So, please come join us next Tuesday at 3:00. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mark. Our next community announcement? Anybody else community announcement-wise? Counsel? You too? Martha? Okay. I'm sorry. Karen? All right.
Hello?
All right, Karen, you're good to go.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, I'm Karen Mulridge, and I am here as a community member, but also as a co-founder of Stand for Peace. My co-founding partner, Donna Nicholson, is in the audience, and she is also an on-time member and also a teacher at Pennegam. In 2019, we started to bring awareness to our city about International Peace Day, and this year, we are planning to gather at the MB Civic Plaza. And this is going to reinforce what we're doing in the schools this year. We have a whole Teach Peace Week of education and conflict resolution that's happening, and it supports the No Place for Hate program. And so, we would ask the community to join us. We're asking our civic leaders and anybody in town, because I know some of you are out of town, the community, community organizers, education, all to gather. And we're working with Miracosta very closely. We have a lot of our Mala UN students involved, and the choir is expected to give us a little music that night. So, we're just in making the first announcement tonight, and we have a bunch of different speakers from the Ed Foundation, from Unified School District, as well as some of the community organizations. And we will teach a little bit about the Actions for Peace, which is the theme this year from the UN. And this is, you know, something that's been going on for a long time there since in the 1980s, but in about 20 years ago.
Karen, 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 I'll stop you there, Karen, but thank you very much for your comments. Donna, you can speak. Anybody else want to come speak on this item? Anybody else? Anybody else on Zoom? All right. Making sure no one here else. Martha, while you're organizing, I'm going to follow up what Director Lee was talking about during the hurricake when we were here. So, remember the Franken and Council Palatano, and everybody was there. At the MB Open, we forgot, during the solace going on, Director Lehman and his staff was handling the MB Open to the downpour and the people in the crowd. That's one thing going on, but you'd think people would stay away during the rain. It's not true. People were there in the stands. Right, Audrey? They were there on the stands the whole time. No one left. I'm not for sure they ran out and they'd come back. Not what happened. While that's going on, acting City Manager Lee, while Bruce is on a well-deserved vacation, realizes this is all going on. So, Joe and I went and checked it out there and see what they're doing. People don't just show up one day and say, "Ready to go." They plan in advance for it. Yes, Emergency Operations Center wasn't up and running three days before, but they were ready to go. When we were there, they were all manned their spots. We all know what was happening. We just didn't know where this storm would go. Would it come right at us? We thought, the first track says it's going to ride over Manhattan Beach. Here we go. So, what they didn't tell you is that they actually filled the sandbags here. Some cities go, "Here's the sand, here's the bag and the shovel. You're on your own." They filled our bags up, and we, what is it, five per resident? I don't know, maybe 10,000 plus went through. I was in an outline. I saw it. And so, people asked the second question, which it didn't hit. What do you do with the sand? I go, "Take it back or pour it to Sand Dune Park. Your choice." We have plenty of sand here, but the point was, our staff was ready. Everybody's ready to go, and we were lucky, folks, that turned to the right. Our neighbors at Riverside County were not so lucky. You saw what Palm Desert, Palm Springs went through. That could have easily been us. We're not built for that much rain that fast. So, unlucky for them, we're happy for us that we're ready. We had some minor damage you talked about, but we could have been a lot worse. But like you said, prepare for the worst. Fingers crossed the best happened here, but it shows you, we're not waiting till the day of to do something. Things happen in advance. You just don't see it all happening, but they do. That's one thing I was going to talk about. And that checked out the list, Joe. You and I've been through hurricake now. No one else has done that on our list. Martha? Let me have their first up. The mayor, next one, September 26th. Most of you who've not been to our new Duncan, you know where it is? MBB and Pacific Coast Highway, where Connecticut is. There's a Dunkin' there. The Dunkin' Donuts is open, coffee, all of that. I know our police and fire know where it's at, but those who have not been yet, I encourage you to visit Dunkin'. No more donuts, just the word Dunkin' is there. So, I'm trying to handle some on the east, some on the west. So, Dunkin's there at, what time is it, Martha? 3:30 September 26th. All right? And our passports. Are we still waiting for Director Schrullian to show up with his? There he is. Our baby passport? That's right. So, if your babies are born in the city from COVID up to now, we have these passports that I think Martha and Kristen and Lisa put together. I'm not sure if that's one of the Schrullian babies and that stock photo, or if that's why, a stock photo. But let Lisa or Martha know, and they'll set that up for you. So, make that happen. I think we're up to speed and everything else. So, the big shout out to Director Lehman and his staff too, because I think the MB Open and Director Lee is great. And those who do not go to Concerts on the Park Sunday, you missed one of the good ones too. So, that's still going. We just don't tell everybody outside of Manhattan Beach, our concert in the park is still going, but they're still going. How many more Sundays do we have? That was it. That was it. Fantastic. So, thank you for that. We'll move on to public comments now in three minutes on any item. If you're going to talk about an item on the agenda, folks, this is your one chance. Either talk on it now or talk on when it comes up. You don't get two bites of the apple. So, those who want to talk about an item, please come down here and talk about it. That counts Zoom as well. If not, wait for the item to show up. With that, please come down and speak at the podium.
Mike McCowsky, 30-year tree section resident. I just wanted to reiterate my concerns and my view that this council, in conjunction with the city manager and chief of police, of course, needs to do more to address the continuing, and I would say worsening, public safety crisis here in Manhattan Beach. I recently documented a number of crime firsts in Manhattan Beach in my newsletter, and we recently had another first, two weeks ago, just 100 feet from my house. The first time, to my knowledge, that thugs coming into our community have tried to loot a U.S. postal vehicle in broad daylight, and then while fleeing the scene of the attempted theft, tried to run over the postal carrier. Now, I believe our police are doing all they can and are making some good arrests, including the postal vehicle thugs, by the way, but arrests alone are reactive, not proactive, and they have a limited impact in this era of zero bail, a criminal coddling DA who won't charge many crimes, and state and county legislators who only care about pandering to their political constituencies, even if that means making the job of law enforcement and the public, making the job of law enforcement harder and the public less safe, like Senate Bill 50, which was introduced by the nitwit state senator from Gardena, that made an unlawful, that if passed, would make it unlawful for the police to make traffic stops for certain low-level violations, even though those stops have at times allowed our police to identify felons with outstanding warrants and unlicensed firearms. Now, today, we'll be discussing how to get around Gascon's ban on certain state misdemeanor prosecutions for so-called quality-of-life crimes. I already know the result. I think you do too, which is we will most likely be unable to prosecute all but a few of these crimes locally, which means the only option short of becoming a charter city with its own prosecutors, hope the voters wise up and vote Gascon out of office next year. We need to go above and beyond in terms of employing every available means to deter crime proactively, and in that regard, I'm glad council is looking today at more security cameras to increase our police department's surveillance capacity. And this, in my view, we also need more surveillance, more mobile surveillance trailers, and if it would help, more license plate readers, which I've heard the mayor talk about, but have not seen any discussion by the full council. We need improved and more timely communication regarding criminal incidents of interest. As an example, I recommend you to look at the recent Facebook postings by Hermosis PD regarding such incidents on Pier Avenue in just the past few days. I and many others also miss our police department's detail from previous year's weekly neighborhood watch reports, which indicated each crime with a street and block location, a brief description of the crime, and highlight in red if it was a preventable crime or a crime of opportunity like a burglary of an unlocked vehicle. And lastly, council must take the lead in communicating with our county and state officials and objecting in writing the types of laws directed that seem to be emanating from them on a weekly basis that if passed, would degrade law and order, you know, like banning police dogs. That was being vaded around up in Sacramento. And publish those communications on the city's website to help inform and educate the residents as to what our elected non-leaders are doing to compromise public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Our next speaker? Next speaker? Anyone else want to talk?
Hi, my name's Steve Packwood.
Steve.
I didn't know Mike was going to be here stealing three-quarters of my speech, but I just would like to add some things here. I looked back over your past agendas from your guys' meeting and haven't seen a lot of public discussion on public safety as it relates to police and fire, et cetera. I know that each and one of you sitting up there sometime during your public career has indicated that public safety is your number-one concern from that perspective. I've been a resident in Manhattan Beach for 35 years, and I have seen crime escalating over the years. First with a rash of Cadillac catalytic converters being stolen, then on to increased break-ins in cars, and finally into breaking in and robberies at our individual homes, and finally at our own businesses as it relates to thefts. Yet, what I see on the agendas of your city council meetings are discussion of a second flower for Manhattan Beach, as well as a survey for what we're going to do for Juneteenth Day. I think our priorities are, from my perspective, our priorities are a little skewed in that As it relates to homeless issues, we've seen an increase of homeless in our area. A couple of weeks ago, Paul and I were out downtown, and we noticed an individual camped out under a sign that says, "No camping." We have a law in the books that says, "No camping overnight," whatever, and basically had been there for two days. This was on day three. So, we basically then called our non-emergent hotline, and were told we can't do anything about it. Well, we can do something about it. They were violating a law on the books. We also told the gentleman that basically we were concerned about his health. Obviously, something was done because I think he was removed on a 5150 later on from that I support our police department and their efforts, and I know that it's very challenging for them, but I think as a city council, we need to make sure that the public is aware of everything that we're doing to basically counter this action. Have a written plan from the police chief and publicize it or at least discuss it here.
Thank you, Steve, for your comments. Our next speaker?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Apologize for the redundancy. I grew up in Manhattan Beach. I raised my children here, and I come here tonight to express my concern. As somebody who grew up here, I know that people say that, you know, it's a different world, but this is still really, really critical that we talk about this. So, the increasing crime in Manhattan Beach, I've watched, as I've mentioned, I've watched the city as I've grown up, and I see it now just going downhill. And I decided to move to another state, leaving the memories as well as some family members behind because honestly, it's too hard to watch what's happening here. So, much of this decline is preventable. I've lived here long enough to remember when folks running for city councils' slogan was, "Small town. Keep it like a small-town vibe." And I just don't see that at all anymore. I live in a city now that is, I don't have to worry about smashing grabs or having my house broken into or worrying about my car being stolen out of my driveway, and I have friends and family here. The things that are happening, I just can't believe it, to be honest. The criminal acts are just something that is, obviously, there's higher levels. There's Gascon, and there's all those rules, but I just feel like we need to actually do something. And when I heard about the people on the strand that had guns put to their head and they were robbed, I thought, "What more has to happen exactly? Like, what are we waiting for before we're really super proactive and more aggressive about patrolling?" And the city that I live in, and it's larger in size, we actually hired private security, not mall cops, but real security officers that were armed, and they walk up and down downtown areas as well as our law enforcement, which is wonderful, and I love the law enforcement here because they're amazing, but they need more help, and our community deserves it. And I'm not here just to complain. I wanted to just give that as an example of what's worked in the community that I live now. Having people walking up and down downtown areas is extremely, extremely helpful, and it's a deterrent. So, my young children, or my adult children, I think they're young, but my adult children live here, and I worry about them every single day. When they were little, we used to be able to walk down to the beach and walk on the strand, and the crime that's happening, I think that whoever is in charge and making the decisions, they should be given six months, and they need to come up with a plan of being more aggressive. I really appreciate your time, and again, I'm sorry for the redundancy, but I came here to speak as a parent and a longtime community member. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, got a lot to say. Number one, I think this is the first time that we've actually had a meeting since the Lahaina fires. And Mr. Mayor, to you and the leadership, I think Jill, I reached out to you directly. A lot of us had family and friends who'd lost everything. Mr. Mayor, thank you. And for everybody that's listening in this community who gave something, who sacrificed to whatever organizations you believe in that you're giving to, the Hawaiians in the island of Maui, I've got, my mom lived in Lahaina for a lot of years, bring tears to my eyes here for a second. Mr. Mayor, thank you. And for this city, thank you very much. That's not what I meant to say. That Plumeria, that is sitting on top of my phone, came from a Plumeria plant from my mom's house in Lahaina. But that's not why I'm here. I'm concerned about the continued, let me change gears for a second, sorry, just the continued blocking of public streets downtown. I think we have a real issue, and it's delivery trucks, it's trucks with uniforms, it's restaurants, it's beer trucks, parking, wherever they want to park. And for residents that live down here, if I park wherever I want to park, guess what? Chief Johnson and her staff, rightly so, there's a somehow, you know, State of California vehicular code that I'm violating. Why does it apply to me and not them? I don't, who makes that decision? But at any point, at any part of the day, there is a truck, and I don't care whether it's a beer truck. it's a beer truck, whether it's a restaurant delivery truck, whether it's one of our big restaurants that support millions of dollars to our community, or whether it's the tiny little food establishments, but at some point, why do they get to park wherever at any point in the day, and we don't? Now, I don't want to, what I want is to correct that action. So what's the answer? I don't, I'm not sure. We're looking for solutions. What do other communities do? Well, as I've looked out into other communities, other communities are a lot larger than we are. They have more than one or two cross-sections coming into the community, and I'm hopeful that council can start some action, make a decision to help the downtown community flow a little better. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You, Jim.
I am here to speak about crime, and I want to state that I fully support Agenda Items Number 14, 16, and 17, especially Number 16, and thank you. I also want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Franklin for his dedicated work on addressing the issues of EVike safety and other serious problems facing Manhattan Beach. Additionally, you always respond to resident concerns about crime and the homeless invasion, and I really appreciate and value your heartfelt leadership. Also, thank you, Councilmember Napolitano, for urging MBPD to start ticketing EVike infractions with no more warnings. I was so happy to hear your position on that, and it inspired something in me, which I'll circle back to in a moment. Now, for the depressing portion of my speech, I had several friends in San Francisco, and many fled after a year of living under Gascon's decriminalization of crime policies. I knew full well that was, that was what was going to happen if we got Gascon in LA County. I don't know how anyone with half a brain in their head wouldn't know, and here we are, living it. County and state policies impact us greatly. We now have SB 50 on the table trickling through the legislative approval process. Seriously, that's next. I mean, a quick scroll through MBPD Instagram feed gives you a sense of how many guns and dangerous criminals are caught from PD issuing tickets for low-level violations. With SB 50, they won't be able to do that, and it's pure insanity. When I first moved to LA, I lived in the Oakwood area of Venice, where the Oakwood gang operated. LAPD SWAT would come in about once a week, and search helicopters would circle several times a week, day and night. I am more concerned about crime and being a victim of crime now because of Gascon's policies than when I lived in gang territory. I thought the violent armed robbery at Pasha would be a turning point for our residents to unite. Now there have been two. When our local stores started placing products behind locked display cases, I thought people would start to wake up, and then we had our three back-to-back armed robberies. There's still no outrage from the community. What's even worse is that residents are not being accurately informed on the sheer volume of crime happening in Manhattan Beach. So who's responsible for the watering down of the reporting of crime? I mean, why are we not reporting what's really happening and not informing our residents? I urge council at a minimum to please utilize our MBPD Instagram feed to update residents in real time of crimes that are happening in the city. And lastly, I ask the city to consider establishing a Gascon Hazard Pay incentive for existing patrol officers and new hires. How about an additional 10K a year? If you all vote yes on Agenda 17, Number B, $500 tickets will add up quickly, and we can use this money for the Gascon Hazard Pay incentive. We will be the first city in LA County doing this, and surely it will attract not only higher-quality hires for our police department, but will also send a message to criminals that we value law and order in Manhattan Beach, and that would go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Hi, council. John Atkinson. Been here since 1967. Love this town, own a little restaurant. Sidewalk dining is always something we've been trying to do, and I heard that we were talking about it tonight. Haven't heard anything about it since, but yeah, I'd just like to say that as a small business owner from here, four generations from here, and I live here, and my sister and mother live here, went to school with him.
Ah, sorry.
You know?
I didn't think you'd admit to that.
Every little bit helps us, you know, and wobbling ideas about it or different interpretations of the law, especially on a Saturday afternoon when someone comes up and says, "You got to move these tables," middle of the day, I mean, this is devastating to a small business. We are all on our knees for the last few years, especially. It's getting harder, not easier. A little consistency with the city on the sidewalk dining would be awesome, and small businesses matter. 25 years ago, he said, "I don't want to have to go to Elsa Gunda to pick up my dry cleaning." That means small businesses here, and I'm one of them, and a local, and a property owner, and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Steve, you get clothes dry cleaned?
What's that?
You get your stuff dry cleaned? That's amazing.
No.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I went to polyester.
All right, our next speaker?
Good evening. I spoke at the last city council meeting, and one of the subject matters I brought up was the signs that I saw dispersed through the city about hate, and Manhattan Beach stands unified against hate. And when I completed my speech, three minutes, Councilwoman Horvath stated, and you can all go back and listen to it, I just want to make clarification that the speaker spoke about the anti-hate signs, MB United, and they are not affiliated with the Manhattan Beach Unified. I do not believe. They are South Bay Coalition Against Hate and the City of Manhattan Beach. I don't, it doesn't have anything to do with MB Unified. Is that correct, mister? I have no idea who mister was. I assume it was the city mayor, or I'm sorry, the city attorney, however, you can't see that, and I certainly was not able to because I was walking away when Councilwoman Horvath said that. So my position is optics matter, words matter, and behaviors matter. Correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't some of these people associated with MB United were Hildy Stern and people like yourself, Councilwoman Horvath, who are now in the South Bay Coalition of Hate? I also believe that, as I said, you, Councilwoman Horvath, were part of MB United Group. I repeat, optics matter, words matter, and behavior matters. So perhaps you can clarify if I've misunderstood some of the connections or lack thereof. Since I was told I was wrong, and I did not have an opportunity to rebuttal that I was wrong, the anti-hate, the anti-signs say Manhattan Beach United, if you look at the optics, let's look at them. The signs are, and it's curious to me, how you use the usage of point size, the positioning of copy, the graphics, the size and the colors that were chosen. For example, I posed the question, why was the South Bay Coalition done in a very faint, barely even visible, gray copy and very small? However, the rest of it was very clear. It states Manhattan Beach stands united against hate, and then we have the hashtag, and we have MBversusHate.org. If any of you have had the opportunity to go look at those websites, I encourage you to do so. What was the average person to think? I consider myself to be average, of average intellect, and I saw those signs, and I came here of concern. I was basically humiliated, and I was told I was wrong without an explanation, and I would prefer, and I will ask for one sometime in the near future. Privately, I don't care, but I deserve an explanation for being told I was wrong, and optics do matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker? No one here in the audience? Martha, anybody on Zoom? No? Making sure anybody else here didn't cover anybody? All right, well, before I close public comment, two things I want to say here. Do you want to say anything?
First of all, I'm very sorry. Clearly, I offended the speaker, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Dory O'Toole, thank you. I'm sorry, what? Dory? Dory, okay, thank you, Dory. You're welcome. Thank you. I really am sorry. Optics do matter, I mean, and we can parse out the different words, but the organization MB United didn't participate in the making of those signs, or that's all I, I mean, there's a difference to me. So maybe we'll have coffee one day and talk about it. That'd be great, thank you. Okay? Yeah, so that's all I got to say.
Okay. I'll pick up a few, Steve's comments, Mike's comments. I'll start with the beginning. Steve, you must have been gone when we talked about public safety three or four times while you were gone. I know you're out of town. I don't think we can get by a month without someone having a public safety comment, which we welcome. Chief Johnson's great. Her team's great. Communication, I think Neighborhood Watch has posted there. You'll see more and more of her city manager, Mo, and going forward, what we're doing to improve things, what's out there. The reason we don't tell people where ALPRs, Automatic License Plate Readers are, because Chief Johnson doesn't want everybody to know where they're at, and I'm with her on that one. I don't publicize that information. It shouldn't be told you where they're at. That's for their information only. I don't even ask myself where they're at. They work. Does that a day go by, they don't spot something because a license plate reader goes on? So there's a lot going on behind the scenes, but we don't tell everybody? Part of that's for your safety and their safety. So that's what's going on. And number two, a lot of meetings happen, our contracts are settled, everybody's back to being Team Again, Team One, Team Manhattan Beach, but I don't want to tell you that the policies of Gascon work in our favor. They do not. First one to say it. Fine, that's an election issue. That's not my city issue. I can't control what happens countywide, but I can, all of us, in our own backyard. Our focus is and should be our backyard, period. Second to that, I have to repeat this every time it comes up. Folks, you missed it during the budget session, we hired 70 officers. The reason why you haven't got all seven on you is because Chief Johnson does a thorough background on them. We can't hire them on day one. It takes time, A, assuming they've gone through the academy to transfer over, and you've got to check them out, right? And number two, if they have the academy, they still take time to get here. So we don't get an instant switch if we get seven officers here, but she'll have the flexibility to put them where she wants to put them. That's proactivity, in my mind. Do a lot of things behind the scenes you don't see. We see that. We know they're there. Like people say, "I don't tell officers downtown." Really? Sit with the mayor's coffee at Pete's today. Tell me the officer to see going by there. So I just sit and wait for all those comments to come by. Okay, we're fair game. Want to criticize something with us? We're fair game, but have your facts straight. When you come to us and talk to us about information, a lot of stuff goes on there. People say people are fleeing the city because of their perception of crime. That's funny, because you look at this, we have a billion-dollar increase with a B in property values of Manhattan Beach from the last year's assessed values. If people are fleeing the city, why are property values going up, not down? Have you seen the lack of homes for sale? Where's a Realtor around here when I need one? Not a Realtor here, but usually a Realtor raises his, "Mike, there's a dearth of homes not for sale." Why? If we're so bad and we're to become the next Venice Beach, I keep hearing, "The next Venice Beach," why are people still here? Why are schools surprised? That's not it, folks. There's a lot of things I can't tell you because the police do a great job. All of us see emails, what, once a day, twice a day, Joe? Things go on, folks. You'd be stunned how much goes through our city and how much they catch. And yes, that's proactivity works both ways, not just officers seeing things, but having the computer help doing things for us. So just know they're busting their butt for us. What happens outside the county, I can't do that. I can't tell you pass that. But give us time to get our people, new people set. Let's go on, and we'll go from there. In the meantime, you have questions, like, "Michael, call me. Michael text me." And see, what about this, and this, and this? There's great questions in there. Not all of them, but some great questions, but we're accessible, and that's the point. So I'll stop with that one. And Jim, to your point about Lahaina, there are a lot of people, all of you helped out with Lahaina. It wasn't me by myself, it was the council, it was staff, it was Skechers, it was Scott and Stacy Rusher, it was Dave Rusher. They were so inundated with three days of supplies, they shut it down. They got overwhelmed in their warehouse over here next door. They couldn't handle more supplies. People in our city reached out to Maui Air and got private medical medicine, baby formula, things sort of there. No one's looking for credit, but we know when things happen in the city, we show up. Not just hurricane-related, all over the country, when that shows up, we were there. So Jim, and your family's part of it. So a lot of things happened, but I'll stop with that one. Anybody else, colleagues, any comments, questions? All right, let's move then to, I had an age consent calendar, and then we pulled off nine and 10, 14 has been reset, city manager for the next meeting.
Yeah.
And yes, we're all in love with those TV cameras that we had in the past, and we want to bring those back all over the city. So with that, I need a motion, I see a motion, Councilman Lesser. What is your motion, sir?
The motion is to approve the consent calendar, less the items of nine, 10. Those are the two items that are on the consent calendars.
Right. And a second, by Councilman Holworth, any comments? Seeing none, vote screen, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. Item's pulled from consent item, Director Lee, just a clarification on item nine. Most you can read that if you can read Number Two font. It is the State of California, we're doing improvements for crosswalks. And Director Lee's report, you put a map on there, I think you put in the map, it showed Florino and Valley Drive. So the question is, it's not just Florino and Valley Drive. That's your first one, is that correct?
There are three locations that are tentatively planned under this agreement. One would be Valley Drive and Florino Road, the other would be Manhattan Avenue and 36th Street, and then there would be Highland Avenue and 40th Street.
And the two other remaining crosswalks, you expect to come back in the next year or so?
This is the funding agreement, we'll do the design, and I think it'd be sometime, probably in 2024, we'll come back to the council before we go out to bid.
Are those one at a time crosswalks, or just two at a time going forward, after Valley and Florino is done?
Yeah, we have to do the design first, and then we'll get an estimate on what the actual construction costs are, and then we'll have to make sure we've got a budget to match it. So we have a few more steps along the way. Does that answer your question?
It does. Those are the questions asked of me, and I want to make sure that was it. I had no problem with the number nine itself, but the detail of going forward, residents always see that and say, "Why is my street not the next one up? Why isn't my crosswalk not being done yet?" We need to go in sequence. That was the answer question.
Yes.
Council questions? Anyone?
No.
Done? Open up public comment on item number nine on the crosswalks. First one at Valley and Florino. Martha, anybody on Zoom? All right, I'll make the motion to approve item number nine, crosswalk. A second, Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, voting screen, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 10, pulled by Councilman Napolitano, consideration of resolution approving amendment to number one and the design service agreement with David Volt's Design Landscape Architects. Councilman Napolitano.
Thank you, Your Honor. My concern with this item is that, you know, we had a, we hosted a sand dune revitalization, opened a house on November 12, 2022. I know that because I was there. And then we had one, a community meeting on April 30, and the November ones coming up to a year past April is obviously months past behind us here, and I'm just concerned that we're hiring a design consultant here, and there's no planned community meeting regarding his work. I know that we're basing it on the survey, and we're basing it on past, but as things do change and things, I guess I'm, you know, number one concern that this consultant, I know they've done other work in the city, that they look at sand dune to polish and not to overhaul it. I don't think anyone wants an entire new scheme out there. We've been down this road before, with the downtown plan, the Veterans Park, when everything, just keep it simple. And the other thing is, you know, at some point, I know this is going to come back to us, or is it going to go back to Parks and Recreation first?
Correct. Commission and then city council.
Okay, so then Parks and Recreation Commission will be another bite at the apple for the public to take a look at this, and they're going to be notified along the way as well out there?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a list of people that were notified?
We do.
Okay, I guess I'm comfortable enough then to proceed. I kind of would wish that the consultant would sit in a room with the concerned neighbors out there at the same time that they're coming up with whatever plan they come up with, but if we're not going to have that, I assume that would be an additional cost.
What I will say is David Volt is intimately involved in this. He was actually one of the engineers when they built Sand Dune back in the day, and so he knows the community really well, and the commission has done a phenomenal job with outreach, and so they've really coalesced along some of these ideas that have resonated throughout, and so he will help with this new contract, package all this information, bring it back to the community. Did we hear you correctly? Was there any other changes? But you are correct, it's not significant. They are the minor changes that really we're hearing from the community, and they're are, again, they're aligned with very similar priorities that we've heard over 250 surveys in addition to the two outreach meetings.
Okay, thank you. I'm comfortable.
Director Lehman, my question is follow-up on that one. Can we pay them, or is it part of our fee to have to hold a community meeting?
So that is including the scope?
So we can.
Individual community meeting, correct.
Why don't we do that, then? Because it's all proposed here.
So we will, and timing-wise, so we were able to use the previous existing contract So we will, and, and timing-wise, so we were able to use the previous existing contract that was in place with David Volt's for other projects, to have him come out and facilitate that community meeting, and that's why it's been on pause to have this new contract in place, and then they'll ramp right back up, and we'll plug in that new community meeting.
Okay, because it's not said here in the public outreach that we were going to have another one. Okay.
That works for you?
Excellent.
Steve, you good with that?
I don't know when that is, though. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Councilman Lesser.
I just wanted you to summarize for whoever might be tuning in. What is the scope of work? I was one who went to one of the community meetings, but it was, just as was mentioned over a year ago. And it's a little bit unclear, you know, what exactly this consultant's going to be doing and how the public will see the work. What does it entail?
Absolutely. So the initial information that was gathered was strictly from the commission and that initial community outreach meeting when David Volt came in, in the April meeting. It was to have a variety of images, looking at the amenities, and people could put a sticker, this is resonating with me, this is something that may or may not work at this site. But in terms of deliverables, they will synthesize all of this community input from all of the previous, again, over 250 surveys, the two community input meetings. What did we hear? Did we get it right? Again, coming back out to the community, providing conceptual plans that he will prepare with his team, maps, renderings. This will include budget estimates for a variety of plan options, not just one plan. And this will also include grading, drainage, utilities, parking, and then a final concept plan and a rendering, including a cost that will be presented to the commission and then brought to council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Director Lehman. Stand by for any questions. Anyone have questions on this item number 10? In the chambers? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom, Martha? Close public comment, council? Need a motion to move it forward on this one? Motion by Councilman Palatano, second by Councilman Holworth. Voting screen, please.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, folks, we are on to public hearings. Item J. General, but now nothing else on J. We're going to be, general business, item K. The first one up is item 13, storm drain utility fee led by Finance Director Schreien. Welcome back, Dr. Schreien.
Thank you, Your Honor. Glad to be back. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Montgomery, members of the City Council. Steve Shirellan, your finance director. Tonight's stormwater item is in the City Council work plan that was initiated earlier this year. Stormwater fund operates on a deficit and requires general fund subsidies. The stormwater fee has not changed for over 27 years, and the single-family resident paying a fixed amount of $19.12. As part of the work plan item, council directed staff to work through the finance subcommittee and come back to City Council for consideration to conduct a survey and a new engineering report for the storm drain utility fee. Tonight, you will hear the results of the survey and engineer's report with representatives from True North and Harrison Associates, who are present on Zoom to answer any questions. During staff's presentation, Tim McClarny from True North will go over the survey results. At the end of his presentation, we will pause for council questions pertaining to the survey. There will be another opportunity at the end of the staff's presentation to ask Harrison Associates, True North, legal, or any other staff questions. Thank you, and at this time, I'll hand it over to Julie Bonderchuk, our financial controller, to go over the item.
She did a great job when you were on vacation, sir. Once you know that.
Yes, she did. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Montgomery and members of the City Council. It is my pleasure to present the report on the stormwater assessments tonight. This is a continuation of the general business item from the May 16th, 2023 City Council meeting. I would like to start off with a short recap of what was discussed during the last meeting. The stormwater fund is an enterprise fund. Enterprise fund functions similar to a private business in that it provides goods or services to the community for a fee. Ideally, enterprise fund should be self-sustaining. The purpose of the stormwater fund is to prevent flooding the streets due to stormwater, prevent trash and debris from reaching waterways, and limit bacteria and metals from those same waterways. The city currently maintains seven full capture systems. The picture on the upper left of the slide shows an example of the debris and trash that has been diverted from waterways due to these systems. Stormwater fees have not changed since the program's inception in 1996. Single-family residential pays a fixed rate of approximately $19 per year for stormwater services. With increased costs and mandates since 1996, the stormwater program is severely underfunded, requiring general fund subsidies of $6 million over the last five years and an estimated $11.6 million over the next six years. On the May 16th meeting, City Council authorized staff to proceed forward with obtaining an updated survey and an engineer's report. And if you're curious, the picture on the slide is of the public works crew vacuuming trash that was flushed down the storm drain outfall at the beach. This chart illustrates the stormwater fund status, with the top orange line depicting expenditures and the bottom blue line depicting revenues, which has, which has been flat since 1996. And the space between the two lines is the general fund subsidies required to sustain operations and meet basic infrastructure needs. If the stormwater subsidies are not addressed, the subsidies will continue to eat away at the unreserved general fund balance. According to recent forecasts, it is anticipated that by fiscal year 2026, the unreserved general fund balance will be completely depleted, and the city will have to dip into economic uncertainty. By fiscal year 2027, or sorry, yeah, 2027, the continued subsidies will start depleting financial policy reserves. From this chart, it is clear that the city's current practice of funding stormwater operations with general fund subsidies is unsustainable in the long term. This chart highlights the current CIP projects in the stormwater fund. Currently, $8.35 million of projects is programmed in the CIP for the next six years and accounts for the bulk of the expenditures. Since the annual stormwater revenue of approximately $350,000 is insufficient to fund operations, these projects would be completely funded by general fund subsidies if no action is taken. An attachment of the CIP projects is also included for the staff report. For the engineer's report, the city contracted with Harrison Associates to develop a reasonable method of calculating stormwater fees based on impervious square footage using the LA County data from Measure W. With the currently programmed CIPs and operations, the proposed fee is 4.6 cents per impervious square footage with average single-family resident play, uh, rate at $129 annually. Since we are using Measure W data, a resident can file appeals on the safe, clean water website if they think their impervious square footage is incorrect. A link will be provided on the city's website at a later date if appropriate. This chart illustrates the different categories of stormwater fees based on fee range. Single-family residential is broken out into three categories to highlight the population in these various fee ranges. Higher fee ranges are due to higher impervious square footages on a property. Looking at the data in another way, the dark blue and the red on this chart accounts for 95% of the residential parcels, which will pay an average annual fee of $129 or less. Commercial properties account for 5% of the parcels with an average annual fee of $1,036. And on Zoom with us today is Tim McClarny of True North, who will go over the results of the survey.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So Dr. McClarny, president of True North Research, we're a firm that's had the privilege of working with the city on a variety of different surveys in the past, and I, tonight's presentation will cover the highlights of the stormwater fee survey we recently completed. Next slide, please. So before we talk about the results, I'll take a quick moment to review the methodology of the study or how we went about conducting the survey. The methodology in a lot of respects is similar to the other, the methodology we've used for other city surveys. The main difference here is because a stormwater fee is actually decided by property owners, the sample for this study was focused on residential property owners in the city. We use a stratified random sample process where we made sure that our sample was balanced in terms of the various fee rates, categories that could be associated with a property, depending on kind of how large it was, and how what the estimated impervious area was, partisanship, as well as sub-geographies within the city. Because these stormwater fees are also one vote per property, we made sure to structure our sample the same way, so it was one complete per residential property. Once we pulled our sample, we recruited using email, text, and telephone. All the invitations were PIN-protected, so only those individuals we invited to take a survey could do so, and they could have one complete per respondent. Ultimately, folks could take the survey either online at a protected website, or by telephone, landline, or mobile, whichever is their preference. And then we completed a total of 423 interviews as part of the study. That, because it's a random sample, results in a margin error due to sampling of about 4.7% at the 95% confidence level. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the results, what we're talking to you tonight, about are within 4.7% of what we would have found had we spoken with all residential property owners. Next slide, please. Okay, we opened up the survey with a few warm-up questions to get folks into the group taking the survey, the first of which simply asks individuals how they rate the overall quality of life in the city, when they say it's excellent, good, fair, poor, or very poor. As you can see here, Manhattan Beach residents prize the quality of life in the city. We had 92% who rated the quality of life as either excellent or good, and that opinion was really widespread. When you look behind this overall results by subgroups based on length of residence, age, gender, et cetera, what we found is at least eight in 10 respondents in every one of these subgroups rated the overall quality of life as excellent or good. Next slide, please. Another warm-up question, but one that's actually relevant to the stormwater fee data as well, is the answer to the question, generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the city of Manhattan Beach is doing to provide municipal services? Because this is, we're asking respondents to comment on the city's performance overall, it could be thought of as an overall performance rating for the city, and here you see nearly nine in 10 respondents, so 87% indicated they were satisfied with the city's performance in providing municipal services. This is relevant because what we tend to find, we do a lot of revenue measure research for public agencies around the state, we tend to find the better job that residents feel that you're doing in providing services to their household, the more likely they are to support a future revenue measure. They're sort of rewarding good performance in the past with the resources you've had with a willingness to give you more resources in the future. Next slide, please. So after those warm-up questions, we get right down to business of what we call the initial ballot test. And the idea here is, before we get any deeper into the interview, start talking in more detail about the possible fee rates that can be assigned to a property, the types of projects and improvements that will be funded by the measure, as well as presenting arguments pro and con, we want to present to respondents a mock-up of what we think that ballot statement could look like and get their reaction. It's a really good gauge the initial ballot test is, of where the community is at on the natural with respect to this proposal, because the only thing they've seen is the language you see in front of you here, they don't have any additional information. One thing I will point out is, towards the bottom of this language, you'll see this dollar figure and then rate A per year. Rate A is the recommended rate, fee rate for that particular parcel, and so every owner received a figure that was based on their property and based on the engineer's report, and so it's that full rate for that particular property owner. So that is the language we tested, and on the next slide, you see the results. So at that initial ballot test, we had 62% of residential property owners saying they would support the proposal. You had 30% who were opposed, you had about 8% who were unsure. For a stormwater fee to be passed, you need a simple majority of returned ballots among property owners. So among your residential property base, we're sitting about 12 points north of that simple majority that's required for passage. Next slide, please. So after that initial ballot test, we also want to dig in on the proposed fee threshold. As I mentioned, we're using rate A here to represent that full stormwater recommended fee for each parcel based on the engineer's analysis, but we also want to test a few lower rates to see how sensitive property owners were to the various rates that were being proposed. So the way this works is called a Dutch auction. You start high, you go low, and we say, okay, if you knew that this measure would cost your property, insert rate A for that property, would you vote yes or no? If they're anything but a definitely yes, we would ask about rate B. Rate B was 75% of rate A. And then if they were anything but definitely yes at rate B, we'd ask about rate C, which would be 50% of the rate A value. And we see is, at that top rate A, we have about, when you're focusing respondents' attention on the price tag of the measure, irrespective of the things it's going to fund, we see a little bit of slippage, but not much in terms of support for this proposal. We check in at 59% support. When you drop that to 75% of rate A, which is rate B, support ticks back up to 62%, and when it drops to rate C, which is again 50% of rate A, support goes up to 68%. So this tends to be a pretty conservative read on support for revenue measures, because what we're doing is, we're kind of focusing their attention on the price tag, irrespective of the things that you're going to use the funds for. It's actually pretty encouraging that when you do that, even at rate A, we're only losing about three points in terms of support compared to where we were at the initial ballot test. Next slide, please. So at this point, we get into the projects and programs section of the survey, and here is where we're really trying to do two things. The first is, we're going to start to educate this respondent more about what this proposal will accomplish. You saw in that initial ballot test, we only had so many words to play with to describe what this measure would do. Here, we have to unpack the measure into all the various projects and programs you see on the slide, and in that way, we're educating respondents more about the proposal. The other thing it allows us to do is understand, of all the ways in which the city could spend a successful stormwater fee, it tells us how voters feel about each one of those individual items, and which of these projects and programs sort of ultimately rise to the top of the list in terms of voters' priorities. And what you see is, everything that was tested was popular. We had at least 65% of respondents say that they would favor spending some of the money on each one of these items. But as you go up the list, you can see that the favorability ratings increase, such at the very top, we have the item of reconstructing or replacing storm drains that are identified by engineers as being at risk for collapse or failures. That was the number one project. You had 87% of property owners say that they would support that proposal, I mean, that particular project, and followed by installing and maintaining devices and storm drains that capture trash and pollution before they enter the waterways. That gave 86% favorability. So all the things that you're thinking about doing with this fund are popular. Next slide, please. So if council chooses to place a measure on a ballot in the future or go through a ballot proceeding, there's going to be an election cycle, so to speak, and during that cycle, you're going to have a lot of discussion and debate in the community about this proposal. You'll undoubtedly have people stand up and advocate on behalf of this measure, explain to their friends and family why this is needed and why they should vote yes. You might also get some opposition. People stand up, say, this is a bad idea, we shouldn't be doing this, and here's why. For this survey to be a reliable gauge of the feasibility of a stormwater fee, we need to know not only where are your voters today, which was an initial ballot test, but also what happens to support for this proposal once respondents are exposed to arguments both pro and con about this measure, like they will be during the election cycle. And so we do that in the space of the poll by testing both positive and negative arguments. Showed here are the positive arguments we tested. What you find is, a lot of these arguments resonate, and the one that, at the top of the list there, is the argument that most of the city's storm drain pipes were installed more than 50 years ago and are starting to fail, creating sinkholes and flooding the damaged streets and private properties. This measure provides the funding needed to fix our storm drains. So you can see here, we test a series of positive arguments, and they get traction. So at this point, voters have heard more about this proposal than they did at the initial ballot test. We got to talk in more detail about the various fee rates that could be associated with the measure. We talked in more detail about the projects that could be funded. We've, we've exposed respondents to positive arguments about the measure. So on the next slide, we circle back to what we call the interim ballot test. We present that same ballot statement I shared with you earlier, and we say, now that you've heard a bit more where you stand. What you see is kind of some stability here. Initially, we had 62%. At this interim ballot test, we're sitting at 60% support, so that's about 10 points north of that simple majority required for passage, with about a third who were opposed and the rest unsure. Next slide, please. And then we get to the negative arguments. The idea behind the negative arguments is I'm going to pepper respondents with the type of opposition arguments they may encounter during an election cycle related to this proposal, so that we have a good understanding of how, should you get opposition? Should there be folks out there in the community saying, you know, that this is a bad idea, we shouldn't be doing this? We have a realistic understanding of how that could impact your property owner's support for this proposal. So you can see, we tested four negative arguments here. The most compelling of which for respondents was the fact that the city already receives $400,000 a year from the county to fix the storm drain system, so we don't need another storm drain fee. The real question, though, is what happens afterwards, and that's the next slide. After those negative arguments, we circle back to what we call the final ballot test, where we present that same ballot statement I mentioned earlier and ask them where they stand, and you can see all those, some of those negative arguments got traction. Ultimately, it only ticked it down in terms of support for this proposal to 59%, so that's one point below where we were at the interim ballot test. So quite a bit of stability over the course of this survey. Initial support's at 62, interim support at 60, final ballot test at 59%. So that's more stability than we sometimes see when it comes to revenue measure proposals. Next slide, please. So all of those ballot tests that I just mentioned were testing rate A, which was that highest rate recommended by the engineering firm in terms of what it's going to take to backfill the funding that you need for the stormwater improvements. If any respondent was a no or unsure at the final ballot test at rate A, we asked them about, well, would they support this if the rate were lowered to rate C? So about 50% of that. And you can see that the white slice of this pie shows about 59% support at the final ballot test at rate A. If among the rest of the folks, we reduce it to rate C, what it shows is you pick up about another 10 points in support if the rate were half that proposed as rate A. Next slide, please. Okay, so what does all this mean? You know, I'm going to circle back to the first overarching question that sort of motivates this type of research, is to understand, is a stormwater fee feasible? What I mean by that is if you, as a council, were to choose to move forward with a stormwater measure, does it have a reasonable chance of success? The answer to that is clearly yes. A lot of the things that we want to see in place for a measure to be feasible, we're seeing here. We saw that with just a simple write-up of the description of the measure and what it would accomplish, we had national support in the community for 62%. That's about 12 points above that simple majority required for passage. All of the projects and services that the funding would go toward were popular. The positive arguments resonated with respondents, and importantly, at each point in the survey where we circle back, presented them that same ballot statement and said, now that you've heard a bit more where you stand, support for the measure was, you know, well above the simple majority threshold, and that's even after we peppered them with negative arguments. And so taken together, these pieces tell us, yes, you've got feasibility here. It's also important, though, to recognize some of the challenges that step out of the poll, or if you kind of step outside of the poll, and just think about the current climate that would be presented to a measure. So we saw some fee rate sensitivity, right? As the rate goes higher, you know, the intensity of support is lower, and so we want to keep that in mind. It's important to note that these stormwater fees, they are decided by property owners, and that's not just residential property owners who make up the vast majority of the property owners in your community, but commercial property owners, industrial property owners, and apartment owners also have the opportunity to vote, and based on our experience doing more than 40 of these types of Prop 218 proceedings, those groups are going to exhibit far less support than your residential property owners. When you factor in what we would expect their support level to be, as well as their participation rates, which tend to be lower than residential properties as well, we net out that, we estimate that you're going to lose about six points from what your residential property owner's support would be overall. So if 62% of residential property owners support this, once you factor in the support levels or the balance from commercial, industrial, apartment owners, it's probably going to drop that about six points. You'd be looking at about 56% net, still above the simple majority required. And then finally, you know, anytime you're doing a revenue measure, you want to be thinking about what else is going on in the climate around you. The economy, inflation, those things seem to be trending our way, so that's a good thing, but we also know we're stepping into what's probably going to be a pretty volatile next year of politicking nationally as well as statewide, and so, you know, those can create some sort of crosswinds sometimes for measures that you want to be aware of. Next and last slide. So what does all this mean? I mentioned, I think it appears feasible, I think these numbers suggest you should move forward. At the same time, it's important to keep in mind that a poll like this is a snapshot in time, it's not a crystal ball, right? It's not looking forward to Election Day, saying, on Election Day, you're going to get 62%. It tells you where your community is at now in the current climate, as well as how they are likely to react to some of the information we would expect to come out during an election cycle. Ultimately, though, what happens on Election Day isn't what your poll says today, it's everything, it's determined by everything that happens from this point forward. And so I mention that mainly because it's a reminder that, you know, you need to be making smart decisions about the type of measure you put in front of voters, so it's well-aligned with the type of measure they indicated they're willing to support, and you got to put the work in in terms of communication and outreach. And so I have some recommendations here on this slide with that, with respect to that, but let me go ahead and end my presentation here, see if there's any questions for council at the moment. I will also stick around to the end if it's more convenient for council to ask questions later.
Great, yes, please stand by for questions as we go through it. Counsel, any questions now, staff, any questions of councils? I'm sorry, of staff now before we open it up. Joe, you good?
Yeah.
Do you have any more to follow up with, Julie? Are you good?
Just a tiny bit more. This chart depicts the timeline if city council decides to adopt the resolution to proceed of a Prop 218 process. In adopting the resolution, city council will also be approving the engineer's report, setting a public hearing for November 7th, and authorizing the mailing of the protest ballots. Assuming no majority protest is received on November 7th, city council can set the next public hearing to January 2nd and authorize the mailing of the ballots. On the January 2nd public hearing, the ballots will be counted. A majority supportive casted ballots of homeowners is required for the new fee to pass. Sorry, the new fee to pass. And if the fee passes, then we can set the new fees for fiscal year 2425. An alternative to the Proposition 218 process is to include the fee in the November 2024 election. This route requires two-thirds voter, voter support of casted ballots of the local population. If either measure does not pass, then the general fund will have to continue to subsidize the stormwater fund. To maintain a balanced budget, the city will then have to look into options of increasing revenues, reducing service levels to cut costs, or deferring capital projects. So this concludes the presentation for tonight. We are asking city council to consider adopting Resolution 230118 to approve the storm drain utility fee report, initiate a Prop 218 process, set public hearing for November 7th, and authorize the mailing of the protest notices. We have Tamora Bryant from Harris and Associates to answer any questions regarding the proposed fee and the engineer's report, and Tim McLarnie from True North is also available.
Great, thank you. Stand by, any questions you might have? No council questions? See an open up public comment? Come down to podium and speak, then we'll go to Zoom next.
Of course, all right. Number one, Director Shirley, and thank you very much. I think his staff has done an absolutely fantastic job. A little bit confused, I know staff had indicated that there's a, needs to be a two-thirds vote or majority, this is a Prop 218, so don't, doesn't there have to be 50? You can't answer this, I understand. Number one, I'm happy to pay whatever we need to pay. I think Director Lee and I have had a lot of conversation about stormwater. We need improvements, we're taking that out of the wrong budget, but just for clarification for the public, for residents, is this a 218 where if I don't have 51% that vote against it, is it automatically adoptive, or do we need two-thirds to vote to have it approved? My only questions, thank you.
We'll answer all the questions when we hear them all. Thank you, Jim. Who else has a question on this item? No one in chambers? All right, we'll go to Zoom, Martha.
There's no response to this.
No one on Zoom? No one here? All right, close public comment. We'll go to council first. Director Shirley, do you, Julie, want to answer the question that you heard from Mr. Burton?
Of course. To clarify, if we go with a Proposition 218 process, we would only require majority approval of casted ballots for the measure to pass.
Majority being what?
Majority being 50 plus one.
50% plus one? Thank you.
And the other alternative is the general election in November 2024. In that election, we would require two-thirds voter approval of the local population, whereas a Prop 218 requires the approval of homeowners.
Got it. Thank you, Julie. Stand by. Counselor, less sir.
I have a question for the city attorney with regard to an upcoming ballot initiative in the state that may impact the threshold that's required retroactively related to this city measure, and also the opportunity that we may have in the current legislature to maybe have the mayor send a letter within the next week before the next council member related to legislation that also relates to an upcoming state measure. Can you kind of unpack that, please, and confirm that it's relevant to this measure here tonight?
So it's already qualified for the November 2024.
It being what?
I was just about to get there. It's called the California Business Roundtable Tax Measure, and mostly, and now George can elaborate, but it's brought by the groups, like the Jarvis Group and other groups, that want to require a two-thirds vote for items like this, like for storm drain fees, et cetera. What's coming up to counter that, it's called ACA 13, it's currently pending in the California Legislature, and the League of California Cities, among others, have asked councils to weigh in on that. Previously, the city council adopted a resolution opposing the Jarvis measure, and at this time, it would, the council could actually direct the city manager, the city, the mayor to sign a letter because of the urgency, and that would be to support ACA 13.
Okay, and just to clarify, why we're talking about this state measure, which is, you know, in the future, is because it would be retroactive to measures like this, correct?
Correct.
So the threshold for passage presently, we just heard
Yes.
was a simple majority, but it would go up to two-thirds
Correct.
retroactively.
Definitely, yeah, that would be the issue, and so that's why the cities are opposed to the ballot measure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, wait. Counselor Patano, then may I bring Tim Franklin?
You have a question? I'll defer to a question.
Yeah, a question. The November 24th election, the November 2024 election, is that put on the ballot, or is that sent to homeowners?
Oh, if, if we were to, if the city council would defer action, they would not go through that, the ballot process. The two-thirds would actually be placed on the election, the 2024 election.
Right, but it's two-thirds of all voters, or two? Because the other one was property owners, right? The 50% plus one is just property owners?
Yes, it would be the voters.
So if there's four voters in the House, they're getting four votes?
I'm pretty sure on that, yes.
Okay.
Two-thirds of all the voters. The significant difference, well, of course, is 50% plus one, if we follow this Prop 218 process at this time.
Right.
You good?
Yep. Good. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. You know, myself, I know this council has always been reluctant to raise fees and taxes on the residents and commercial business owners here. Nobody likes to do it. The economy's been bad the last several years, we've had to deal with COVID, there's all sorts of things. This is a longstanding issue in this community, obviously, since the early, mid-'90s, when after Prop 218, the cost was set in stone, the assessment was set in stone on each property, so we're paying to the tune of about $19 on average homeowner, which is, you know, ridiculous these days. What is that, three lattes at Starbucks? I can't even count. But the reality is, you know, the benefits from this would be huge to this city. It would provide environmental benefits, allow us to have the funds necessary to, to talk about and address the issues with the storm runoff. We're talking about some of those tonight, the centrifugal, centrifugal force catches, there are other things that we can do, filtration systems and things like that, that we're going to need to do to meet state mandates for water. There's health, safety, and welfare benefits. We can start addressing some of those reasons why we needed the sandbags, this past hurricanake, as you describe. And, you know, setting even those things aside, though, this is the biggest threat to the budget outside of Sacramento that there is. Sorry, I had to get that in. But it is, because all the folks who were down here earlier talking about wanting more police and security and cameras around town, well, the more that the stormwater fund is subsidized by the general fund, the less money there is to do those things that people want us to do. There are obvious constraints. While Manhattan Beach is an affluent city by the measure of its residents, City Hall is not. We rely on the state and then property, the sales and property taxes, the property taxes are obviously capped by Prop 13, and there's lots of constraints on what we can do. And so if we're going to maintain our reserves, if we're going to maintain our AAA bond rating, if we're going to maintain our public safety and hiring more firefighters and more police and having good parks and clean beaches, we're going to have to do this sooner rather than later, and if we put it off, we're just going to have to pay more later. So better do it now, and so that's why I've made a motion to move forward with this. Thank you.
Well said. Counselor, less sir.
I'll echo Councilmember Napolitano and say this. None of us likes to pay more taxes and fees. None of us do, but we have no choice here. As Councilmember Napolitano just described, we have to make these improvements to our stormwater system. These are not elective measures, they're not feel-good measures. This is infrastructure. We have not raised the fee for paying what our out-of-pocket costs are since 1996. This is older infrastructure, which is failing. We're under obligation, under federal, state, county law, to make these revisions, and we have to do it, and it's taking an ever larger portion of our city budget to pay for this, because there's such a gap between the revenue we take in. If we don't address this growing hole, our basic functions of the city are going to be impacted. We pay for our police, for our fire, for so many basic services from our general fund of our city, which is now propping up this fund to pay for stormwater. We have no choice. I'll be supporting it, and I also would suggest, I see a motion's already been made, that we include in that motion authorization for the mayor to support legislation that would lead to a constitutional amendment, a ballot initiative for all voters to vote on, to keep the threshold at a, at a point where local jurisdictions like ours can vote for things like this, can improve their infrastructure, because otherwise, we're facing a sense of paralysis with necessary infrastructure improvements. So, thank you, Mr. Man.
Is that a friendly amendment?
That would be a friendly amendment.
Accepted.
All right. May I bring Tim Franklin?
Yes, thank you. You know, we live in a beautiful place, a beautiful ocean, a beautiful beach, and this is the price that we have to pay to keep it that way. We pay extra for our street sweeping. The state mandates, I think, only once a month, and we do it once a week. Why? Because we have a responsibility to the, to the beaches and the ocean, where if, if a rain comes and it washes what's in the street down into the ocean, that's on us. So, so we have a history of preserving what makes this town very desirable to live in, a great place to play in, and it's, it provides a lot of enjoyment. Go back to 1996, you know, at $19, it, not many things that cost $19 back in 1996 cost that today. So we have to understand the to understand the, you know, the impact of inflation. Some of us, it benefits, homeowners, investors, people like that. So this is an investment in our future. It's an investment as being stewards of the environment and for future generations to enjoy what we've enjoyed throughout the years. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you, sir. I'll wrap up here. I think my colleagues have made it all clear. My statement to this is, just think of the one item. We spent eight million dollars in the last five years propping this thing up. It's funny, it's ironic that those people that speak loudest for public safety disappear when it comes to things like this. It's like, really? This is what you should be fighting for. You should be the first guy in line to be here telling me, Richard, you have to do this so we can pay for more police, you can pay for more fire. Fix your roads. Disappear. But thank you all for being here, and you can hear that. But this is important for those reasons alone. I don't want to be the guy on council that says you overspent your budget and didn't pass something to fix all this when you could have fixed it. So with that, we have a first by Counselor Polatano, a second by Councilmember Horwath. Let's see, voting screen, please.
A silent council member.
Yes, the sixth member.
Motion passes five zero.
Great. And there's actually twenty-one lattes. Over the year, one twenty-nine. Folks, we're going to take a ten-minute break before we break our next long item. So ten minutes, we'll be back here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I saw Amy getting fidgety.
...
and then ultimately end up with your final result. So we asked Council this evening to focus specifically on the questions presented in our staff report, understanding that we will be addressing all other matters as we proceed with our efforts and understanding that not all issues can be addressed simultaneously. While the task force is diligently working on formulating recommendations on matters related to occupancy, alcohol service, refuse, vehicle loading, et cetera, we are not prepared to present any recommendations to Council and ask for direction on those matters at this time. We do hope however that the Council can give us direction as specifically presented in the staff report. I will turn it over to Jay Hee Yoon at this time to present and then we will both be available for questions following the presentation.
Thank you. Senator Yoon, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. I'm Jay Hee Yoon, Senior Planner, leading this long-term outdoor dining effort. And the item before you is a status report regarding the long-term outdoor dining program development. To provide you with some background, back in October, August 2021, the City Council provided direction to staff to pursue studying a work plan item for long-term outdoor dining and business uses in the right-of-way and public property. In February of this year, the city's temporary outdoor dining program came to an end consistent with the end of the state of emergency. And in April, the City Council appointed the remaining outdoor dining task force members with the first meeting kicking off in May. And in June of this year, the City Council approved a professional services agreement with MIG to assist the city in specialized areas of the program development to expedite the process as well as supplement the resources that are currently unavailable in-house. Thus far, the city has held five outdoor dining task force meetings covering a variety of topics. At the kickoff meeting on May 1st, we started off by discussing the program scope, a visioning exercise, and a SWOT analysis. At the next meeting, we went into informational sessions to review the living streets design manual. They rescinded downtown specific plan to see if there are elements that we want to replicate and incorporate into our program. And we also looked at two permanent outdoor dining programs that were blessed by the Coastal Commission in which they were City of San Diego and the City of Capitola. At the next meeting, we looked at code considerations as it relates to fire, building and safety, public works, and traffic code requirements. And on July 25th, this is when the task force voted to refine the program scope and they were provided an overview of the required code amendments moving forward. And at our last meeting in August, we started discussing outdoor dining operations as it relates to occupancy, alcohol services, and the like. So initially, when we first started the task force meetings, they were open to exploring a very broad program scope in that they wanted to include all business uses citywide on public and private property. However, after going through a series of these meetings by learning more and discussing amongst themselves and realizing that a narrowed program scope will work best for our city, they concluded that a refined program scope should be recommended and the next few slides will be providing you with those details. First is in terms of the business uses. The task force recommended limiting it to eating and drinking establishments only, which we know as restaurants, but also include Culture Brewing and Hercules, to name a few. But this does not include grab-and-go style eateries that fall under a different business use category per our municipal code, which is food and beverage sales. Originally, the task force also wanted to consider allowing public use of the private on-street decks during non-operating hours to balance the privatization of public property with greater public benefits. But from our experience from the temporary outdoor program and looking at other local jurisdictions with similar provisions that require public use of these on-street decks during non-operating hours, it's something that's very difficult to enforce. So as an alternative, the task force suggested that we incorporate public right-of-way improvements as part of this program where we can have some, we can take advantage of some opportunities in the existing open spaces and bolster them with some uniformed streetscape, street furniture, and hardscape and landscape improvements. So other business uses such as the food and beverage sales that I mentioned earlier can take part as well as being open to the general public. And the image that you see on this slide is from the downtown specific plan where it talked about the public realm being activated. And we see this as an example of what that could be in the future if we do take this into consideration. Next is locations. The task force is recommending that private property outdoor dining be allowed citywide in areas where there are excess parking spaces available beyond the minimum code requirements for each establishment. It also includes taking advantage of underutilized open spaces that are existing with the establishment or the courtyard space. And lastly, second-floor outdoor dining decks that are currently already allowed in the city for the most part. In terms of the public right-of-way, the task force recommended limiting it to downtown and north end only as they were most actively participating in the temporary outdoor program, which includes sidewalks, on-street decks, and walk-street commercial quarters if the City Council decides to do so. The idea of including walk-street commercial quarters is due to the potential merits it has. First is that in discussing this concept with the Coastal Commission, they were receptive of the idea because it was a better option of taking advantage of these public spaces that do not take away on-street parking, in which case the city must demonstrate how replacement parking will be provided. And also, since there are only 15 parcels that are eligible to take part in the commercial use of walk-streets, it would be the most manageable form of outdoor dining amongst the ones that we are proposing today. And based on staff's analysis using Uncle Bill's and Ocean View Cafe's walk-street dining as an example, if we allow all 15 parcels to participate as eating and drinking establishments, there will be roughly 240 seats being added on these walk-street commercial corners. But if we limit it to the six existing eating and drinking establishments, that number will come down to roughly 96 seats being added. We do want to note that the current municipal code section 7.36.170B currently prohibits long-term commercial use of walk-streets unless there is a valid encroachment permit issued prior to January 2003, which applies to Uncle Bill's and Ocean View Cafe. This is a snapshot of the 15 eligible walk-street commercial corners that we just mentioned. And the numbers that you see on the map and the color correspond with the existing uses or address and what kind of establishment they are. These are street views of those eligible walk-streets. And another slide showing the walk-street, street views. The last one for downtown. And this is a snapshot of the eligible walk-street commercial corners for the north end with their corresponding uses as of today. From here, I'd like to briefly walk you through the amendment process in order to implement the program. After amendments to the relevant code sections as well as the policy documents are drafted, it'll first be reviewed by the PPIC and the Planning Commission for recommendation before the City Council. And once the City Council adopts these amendments, if it is within the coastal zone, then yes, the Coastal Commission will need to review and certify the document before it's implemented. But outside of the coastal zone, the city can immediately issue permits and allow the outdoor dining to occur. In the case where the Coastal Commission's review is required, there are two options that we can consider. It would be the LCP amendment that is the traditional path for introducing new programs and amending extensive amendments to the provisions in the LCP. Or there's another option that we can consider, which is a minor LCP amendment followed by a city-issued coastal development permit. This is a simplified workflow of the two options that we can consider regarding the LCP amendment process. And the biggest difference between the two is how the coastal development permit is issued. For option one, each business owner within the coastal zone will have to apply for their own CDP. While the second option, which is a minor LCP amendment, the city will issue itself a blanket CDP that will cover the entire coastal area. And for reference, a minor LCP amendment involves revising the existing provisions to make more specific and which do not change the kind, location, intensity, or density of the land use. So it usually requires that the LCP amendment scope is minimal. Due to the advantages of the minor LCP amendment that I just mentioned, including a relatively streamlined process with the Coastal Commission and the ability of the city to revisit this program in five years to make any changes or modifications as necessary without having to go back to the Coastal Commission. And also the fact that individual applicants do not require a separate CDP, staff is working towards this approach given that our program scope is narrow enough that it may qualify for a minor LCP amendment. But it is important to note that whether our LCP amendment process qualifies for a minor or not is really dependent after we submit our application or our LCP amendment to the Coastal Commission for review. While it cannot be guaranteed that we can definitely go through a minor LCP process, the Coastal Commission staff has emphasized that continuing to frequently engage in discussions during program development for their feedback will be helpful in expediting their review process, which staff has been doing and will continue to do so into the future. During recent months, some members of the task force as well as the public has brought up the question of whether a community survey will be conducted as part of this work plan effort. MIG's current contract related to community engagement includes three task force meeting facilitations that is also open to the public, several stakeholder interviews, and also two robust community workshops that will be held in the near future. But it does not include a statistically valid community survey. If the city desires to conduct one, we can consider three options. The first being preparing one in-house and circulating it to the public. Second is incorporating tools into the two community workshops, the first of which is planned for on Monday, October 2nd, at the Jocelyn Center, starting from 6:00 p.m. And the last option is revising MIG's contract to include a statistically valid survey. Another topic that was brought up during one of the task force meeting is analyzing one-way street configurations to see if it would be the best feasible solution in addressing street deficiencies that will result from the outdoor dining program. While this idea was supported by some, it wasn't unanimous amongst the task force members. But we do see that this may benefit us in the long run if it's something we want to consider after first looking at reconfiguring parking spaces. And it should be noted that back in 2016, as part of the downtown specific plan workshop, a similar question was posed whether we should reconfigure some street segments for one-way streets to allow for more parking or public amenities. And at that time, the public was strongly opposed to this idea. And since then, the city has not been studying the possibility of one-way streets or have considered it and it was not included in MIG's work scope. Recognizing we've covered a lot of information, I'd like to take you back to the focus of today's discussion, which is receiving direction from the City Council regarding the task force recommended program scope and whether additional consultant work scope should be included. Specifically, the task force recommended business use, which is limited to eating and drinking establishments only with opportunities for the right-of-way improvements on existing open spaces that can be utilized by other business uses and the public. And in terms of location, allowing private property outdoor dining citywide and allowing public property outdoor dining in downtown and north end only with the inclusion of the walk-street commercial corners identified. And lastly, providing direction on whether to proceed with a statistically valid community survey and/or a one-street analysis. This concludes staff's presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Can you put that last slide up again? Thank you.
Well said, Senior Senator Yoon. Stand by, I'm sure we have more than five questions for you. And I'm going through pie chart withdrawals after seeing that survey earlier. So let's start off, Councilor Polatano first, then Representative Tim Franklin.
Thank you. Couple of questions. First, on the statistically valid community survey, what are we surveying?
We are surveying the preferences from the community, whether...
Preferences for what?
Preferences, it could even go back to our program scope if they agree with the walk-street commercial corners, if they want a limited public outdoor dining in downtown and north end only, but also listening to their concerns on what they want to see in this program moving forward.
Right, but I mean, I just, there needs to be context, right? If we go out and say, "Do you like to eat outdoors?" Like, "Do you like puppies and sunshine?" I don't need to be surveyed to spend $14,000 to find that out. I mean, there seems to me that's extremely premature to go out and do that because I would ask this, have we asked how many restaurants will actually be participating in the program once it is set? We don't even have the parameters for the program yet. What are the parameters for the program? At what cost will the program be? We've talked about per square foot, per parking space, $5, $4, whatever it is. How many parking spaces per business is going to be taken offline? We don't know. How many parking spaces will need to be replaced? We don't know. How will they be replaced and at what cost? Because the Coastal Commission has said we need to replace one for one, right? Where is that going to be? What's it going to cost? What equity considerations will be made for modestly priced eateries versus more high-end eateries? Have we surveyed the walk-street residents adjacent to the walk-street eateries as to whether or not they would support it? Seems to me that there are some micro surveys we should be doing here. And then are we going to have to revise the conditional use permits of these restaurants anyway to adjust for the increased occupancy and density and intensity of use? We've seen, I'm not going to name names, but there are places operating out there now that are in violation, clearly in violation of their conditional use permits currently. So before you do a survey, you need to have the right questions. Otherwise, it's garbage in, garbage out. And we're not going to just ask people, "Do you like outdoor dining?" Because there are going to be implications and consequences to all these things as to who's going to participate, who's not. Is it going to be the haves versus the have-nots, north end, downtown, et cetera? So I don't see the value currently of doing a survey until we get answers to these questions. The other question I would have was, I guess I don't understand this part. On the bottom of page seven of the staff report, it's page 657 overall of the agenda. It's at the bottom of the page, it says, "On one-way streets, the additional work scope will specifically analyze if the proposed outdoor dining program will result in any street deficiencies such as parking space elimination." I mean, duh. We know that if we follow the program that some are advocating for taking up parking spaces, we're going to lose parking spaces. That should, isn't that part of the original scope of the program that we have now? And the contract that we have with the consultant now? So I don't even know why that sentence is in there because I want to just be clear that we don't need to analyze one-way streets to know, to then analyze what we're going to, if we're going to lose parking spaces or not because of eateries, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Good points. I'm glad he goes first.
Yes.
Representative Franklin, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, great presentation. Can you go back to slide seven, please? Let's see, where is it? A little bit more. Yeah, that one. Yeah, that one. The number's obscured here on my screen, but... So on that one, did you say? You gave a figure for the number of seats or, you know?
That may potentially be added.
That would open, and how much was that?
If all 15 parcels participated as eating and drinking establishments, it would be roughly 240. If it was limited to the existing six eating and drinking establishments, it would be roughly 96.
And if it was limited to the six?
The six existing eating and drinking establishments, four in downtown and two in north end.
Okay, so if all 15, it's 240. And if it's existing, it's 90?
Six.
96, okay. Now, how many of those seats are already there with sidewalk encroachments, for example? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you know, if we can kind of get that, that information at some point...
That's a point of contention for one establishment.
So sidewalk dining, it's not equal across the board because it's based on your street frontage and then also your street width. So it differs from one establishment to the other. There is one establishment I can think of off the top of my head that has six two-tops along their frontage, so that's 12 seats, for example. If we were to compare that to Ocean View, which is one of the, you know, legal non-conforming establishments that already has the privilege of the walk-streets, they have about 16 seats in their encroachment area.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to get to is, what is the additional number of seats we get if we go and follow this, this plan? I mean, additional beyond what we... I'm trying to get an idea of, you know, if you look at this from a business... this from a business financial standpoint, how many more seats are we going to be giving? And then how much is that going to cost and, you know, that kind of thing?
So the occupancy discussion is, we initiated those discussions with the, with the task force, as Jay mentioned, but it is very convoluted because once you increase occupancy, then you're increasing parking demand. You are going outside the bounds of the use permit requirements. You are increasing the amount of refuse that is produced by the establishment. And so it triggers a series of things, which, so it is, it is a very nuanced discussion that we're having with the task force right now. And the way the sidewalk dining permits are operating right now under our current municipal code requirements, we only allow them to take the tables from the inside and move those outside on their sidewalks. So we don't have, so it's a net zero change in the occupancy, which is something that's still in discussion with this program.
Okay.
Is it the, are they taking them from the inside and running outside?
That is, that is what they're supposed to be doing. I should rephrase that.
All right. I'll stop.
And I just want to get a gauge, an initial gauge of the public interest. Can you give me an idea how many public, you know, is, does the task force meet here in the chambers?
No, the task force has various locations depending on the facility availability. We've met in the Jocelyn Center, in the Police and Fire Community Room, we've met in the Library Community Room. And typically, we have anywhere from two to 10 members of the public in attendance.
Okay. And we've, we did a survey back when with, for the one-way streets, I believe, right? And when was that done?
For the downtown specific plan.
Okay. And it was like 70% opposed or something? Okay. Is there-
Wait, hold on.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Is there any indication of how or why that would change?
No, there is no indication of how or why that would change. It is a topic that the task force discussed, and there was some interest in, you know, potentially pursuing that option if we have to, to make this program work. Now, we may continue down a path of evaluating other options before we, you know, make a decision on this, and that's something that's absolutely available to the council this evening. We could table that and come back to it if we find that the things we are currently analyzing and evaluating don't end up producing the outcome that we're looking for.
Okay. And we just want to give to the public, in case they're not familiar with the term SWAT, can you give a definition of the word SWAT? S-W-O-T, an acronym for-
Yes. It's Strength, Weaknesses, Opportunities, and Threats.
Okay. So this is a general, or even specific, planning tool, right, to, to help guide discussions and things?
Not just planning, but in general, I think it's used in businesses as well.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you.
As opposed to SWAT?
Right. Well, Councilor Looser, well, that's, that's, I just, I just remember I went through it and I said, "I remember what that was, but, you know, who knows, you know, it's not widely known."
I'd like to pick up on the question about the street analysis and confirm, what type of analyses does staff believe it still needs beyond just one-way streets to be able to assess what the opportunities are so that it's undertaken in real time, so that at the end of this process, there can be a recommendation? Do you need further, do you need any further studies to help evaluate what, how much room there is, for example, if there's a potential consideration of use of the public right-of-way?
So we are currently looking for the direction on scope because with everything, scope then leads us to understand how much space we need, right? And so the exercise of how much space we need is what we're ready to undertake at this point. We have some resources internally where we're trying to do some design configurations, and we're working with MIG, MIG's parking consultant, to figure out the best way to be able to incorporate some dining decks and then potentially reconfigure the parking spaces so that we have, you know, the least amount of loss possible. Again, beyond that decision, once we start talking about occupancy, then, you know, we're going to need to look for some additional measures considering if you're, if you're increasing in occupancy, then you have a higher demand for parking. So we do have some resources available to us right now. We're trying to do the work with what we have available. This was one thing we really hadn't considered as a part of the work scope in terms of the one-way traffic. Of course, if you do one-way traffic, you can, you can have wider sidewalks, potentially the opportunity to have the dining on the sidewalk closer to the establishment rather than closer to the road. There are a lot of other things that come along with potentially considering one-way streets, and I think that's one of the things that triggered this conversation with the task force.
What I'm struggling with is trying to understand whether staff needs this analysis of one-way streets now, or is this a bit circular? Because the plan may entail evaluating other street options beyond just one-way streets. And maybe this is not necessarily the study that you might need. You might need something a little more broad, correct?
At this time, we don't need something broader than what we have. We're comfortable moving forward as is. If, if it turns out that we do need something more broad, of course, we're not, obviously we're not shy, we, we will come back. We're asking for direction today. We're happy to do that again. I think we have enough to move forward at this time. We did want to present this as it did come up, the task force, and, you know, we're trying to be as transparent as possible in passing on any requests or discussions that have arisen. And that's where we are today.
Okay. I have a separate question. I recognize staff is looking for specific direction from council on these items that were just laid out. But all of us have received emails from residents downtown about concerns, particularly about loading and unloading of vehicles at various times of day. And it's unclear whether more regulations are needed or more staff to enforce existing regulations, but I'm wondering if there was consensus on council tonight, could that be something that we could direct staff to be looking into at the same time on a parallel track with these recommendations for downtown dining to the extent that they might intensify use downtown? We would want to ensure that we at least have adequate protections to enforce restrictions on loading and unloading of vehicles at various hours and blocking of streets and other impacts that residents downtown have complained about.
Absolutely. I will say that at every single task force meeting, there's been a common theme that we've been hearing, and, you know, I want to say this so that, and the residents see that we are hearing them loud and clear. This issue of increased refuse problems, parking, impacted parking issues that the residents and the community dealt with while outdoor dining, the temporary outdoor dining program was in place. In addition to the ongoing issue of vehicle unloading, loading, and the times of day that the loading vehicles arrive, and, you know, the traffic jams they're causing, blocking, blocking vehicle lanes, et cetera, these are all real issues. And as a part of our baseline analysis, I think, I think it's inherent to the effort. It would be problematic for us to ignore those issues and then move forward with, you know, the, the scope of the program that we have in front of you today. I believe that it, and, and we've already started having some of these discussions, we have to be addressing these simultaneously.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, your turn now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's early in the morning for me. I'm experiencing some jet lag, so I'll use that as an excuse tonight. It's so interesting, of course, it's obvious when you say it, that, let's say, somebody, a restaurant has an outdoor dining deck and increased their occupancy capacity, that would trigger more parking needed. I'm sure to some on the committee, that was probably, you know, pretty surprising, right? If you're not used to land use and planning issues. And so I understand, I think that that's probably something that changes this notion of one-way traffic, you know, one-way streets. Is that feasible or not? I'm agnostic right now. I don't know until I see a study, right? So, you know, I was on the council back in 2016 when we worked on the downtown specific plan. Yeah. So, hey.
Was that downtown specific?
You know what? Turns out, that's what we're doing right now as well. Okay. And there were a lot of things back then that people just said, "Oh, let's just shove this, oh, this and that," that we're talking about now. So you guys can laugh all you want, all right? Or cough. I have cough drops. Don't worry. The point, the point is, I also don't think, or the point, the question is, I don't think it was actually a survey because the, the sentence in the staff report says in 2016, "One of the workshops for the aforementioned plan," one of the workshops posed the question, "Should Manhattan Beach Boulevard be converted to a one-way street?" It was at a workshop. It wasn't a survey that went out. It wasn't-
Whole percent.
A whole, right? So while it was true that the people who responded in the workshop, 70%, were against that, great, I get that, that's very different than what we're talking about here, though. We're talking about a whole, a look at the whole downtown as a whole, and things have changed because we all now, there's this big push and acknowledgement for, "We want outdoor dining decks, we want some sort of outdoor dining program." So I kind of want to point that out, that, that is-
Question?
What?
Was that a question?
There was a question, and that wasn't, that wasn't a survey.
Oh.
And that, and we're all talking like, well, there was a, we got an email, oh, there was a survey done. It wasn't a survey, okay? It was a question at a workshop. So it's not, it's not the same thing. So that's what I was getting verified. All right. Can I? So let's see, see if I have anything else. But the other thing that I, when we approved MIG, I think I asked at the time, "Does this include a traffic study?" And I was, I was told that it did. So, so is there an additional fee for this traffic study?
In the form of a parking lane reconfigurations, but the one-way analysis is separate.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
Are you good?
I am good.
All right.
Despite, despite the disrespect and the teasing, I am good.
Thank you, sir. Wake. There are a couple for you, both Senior Penney-Yun and Director Mizongi. I don't know which is first, but let's use the Moffett family. Those of you who remember Manhattan Coolers, Jim, I know you remember Manhattan Coolers, so I'll just eat their little, and the Moffett family, and Tom here, I know that story. Could you go to page eight of the staff report where it talks about directions needed? Item A, sub-two, location. Allow private property outdoor dining citywide utilizing parking spaces. Here's the question. Only when excess parking spaces are available. That's question one. Developing underutilized spaces, that's question two. So I'll stop there for a minute. So where's an example, you guys can tell me, utilizing parking spaces only when excess parking spaces are available? Can you give an example of what that is?
So each establishment has a minimum parking requirement depending on the area and the seating. And if there is more space beyond what they are required, for instance, if they only require 10, but they have 12 parking spaces, then they can utilize those excess two parking spaces for outdoor dining.
Great. But you, under the heading says, "Allow private property outdoor dining."
Yes.
So if Joe is a property MBB, and he wants to have a party on the street, Joe, for your annual Nancy Margarita party, he could use underutilized spaces. If they're not being used, Joe can take those spaces, the private property owner, correct?
If, if he has a eating and drinking business establishment.
Make that happen. And only when excess parking spaces are available, which means there has to be someone tracking when they're open, right? How else would you know when they're open? Is it when Joe decides to have an event on Saturday at 4:00 to 6:00? Is it only when Joe walks out and blocks them up with orange cone, "Don't park here," and they're available?
Excess parking spaces in terms of the code requirements. So because eating and drinking establishments are governed by use permits, we have a very clear way of tracking what their approved plan shows, how many spaces they are required to have and how many spaces they, they provide, in fact. And some, some establishments historically may, you know, have been approved for more parking than they actually need, and those would be the scenarios. We would, we would have to go back, look through their use permit, their approved plans, make a determination, and then they could potentially utilize that space.
So the owner would have a criteria to use before the day of the event, a week of the event. He has a criteria to follow. You will know whether there's access, excess spaces or not before it gets to that point. You'll know and say, "Excess or no excess."
Yes.
He can approve the permit.
And it's not necessarily for events. This is, this discussion is really focused on permanent outdoor dining.
Got it. But the key there was, it says, "Private property owners." All right. I'm good. I'll stop there. And LCP, local coastal program.
Oh, no, no, I knew that.
So people ask what LCP is, government speak. LCP, just so we all know. I'll stop there. Representative Franklin, you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, just one more question, if I could, please. So throughout the report, it talks about the coastal act's priority for visitor-serving, visitor-serving amenities. And I'm like, to what extent, I mean, just sort of thinking a little bit outside the box right now, we're looking at parking spaces, but could something, for example, like a shuttle program to shuttle visitors, right, seeking amenities, you know, visitor amenities, a shuttle service from off-site, meaning off-site from downtown or even the north end, and shuttling beachgoers or, you know, downtown visitors and the like to specific drop-off points? Is that something they consider? Or is it-
That is absolutely something we are considering as a part of this program to compensate for the loss of parking spaces. We are trying to come up with, you know, a collection of ideas as to how to address that deficit. And one of those things that's on the table and, and being considered by the, by the consultant and our team internally is a, is potentially a shuttle program. And what that would do is it would show the coastal commission that we're preserving coastal access to the general public, because really, if you don't have public spaces, public parking spaces available for the general public, then you're making it really difficult for them to get to the coast and to enjoy and appreciate the coastal amenities that are provided throughout our city. And by offering a shuttle program where they could potentially park elsewhere and then get shuttled to the coast, that is, that is something that would help us with compensate for the loss of the parking.
And, and are there any concrete examples of that? Or could you, is it a one-to-one ratio of lost parking spaces to off-site parking spaces? Or does it have to be a different ratio?
Not necessarily a one-to-one ratio. Again, we're, we, we have been tasked with providing them, you know, a whole package, a complete package of suggestions as to how to make up for the loss of the publicly available parking spaces. One of the ways we're doing that is by suggest, suggesting the street furniture improvements to be able to make spaces available, parklet spaces available for the public who can't necessarily afford to dine at the restaurants that have the private dining decks. That way, they can go grab a coffee, sit in the parklets, and the coastal commission sees that as part of your package as to how you're compensating for the loss of spaces.
Right. Okay. Great.
Councilor Polatano, your turn.
Just, again, tagging on to what Mayor Portim Franklin was talking about in terms of shuttle or anything else, again, context, especially in terms of funding. You know, is the task force looking at what the funding of these things would be too? Because we've seen various numbers thrown at us before about shuttles and things like that, which have been money pits in the past. So is that one of the considerations? Who's going to pay for it? How it's going to be paid for?
Absolutely. The consultant scope did include a sub-consultant who will be focusing specifically on fiscal impacts and so, and potentials for how much things are going to cost once we have the program well-defined, and what would be, you know, the part of the city versus the part of the private, private property participants.
One, one final question. I'm sorry. It says on our agreement with MIG that we are, we're paying for two separate community workshops. You're going to host those down the road once we get more defined on the road? Okay. Great. I'm good. Anybody else? Open up public comment. Please come down here and see if you can stump our two experts here.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilman, persons, Staphon Kampa, Long Term Resident. You know, I was in the consulting industry for 25 years, and this whole discussion reminds me of something that we went through. We realized during this process that we were doing systems, and we were charging them hundreds of millions of dollars to install these things. And at the end of the day, the executives would go, "You know, that's not what I wanted," after we spent all this money. So what we realized we had to do upfront was really have a conversation about, not the solution, not about all this little detail stuff that we're talking about right now, but really get into what are the outcomes we want? What do we, how do we have, what do we have today? And where do we want- What do we, how do we have, what do we have today? And where do we want them to be? So when I think about this one is, is, and I encourage it, and this is, I'm sharing this because I really want us to be successful. I would, I enjoy outdoor dining. But for us, the community, we need to kind of get this nailed. So for example, one objective could be is we want to offer our businesses, these, you know, restaurants, you know, outdoor dining. How many do we have today? What is our goal? Do we want 15? Do we want 20? Okay? We want to be neutral on our parking spaces long-term. Maybe that's what it is. We want to be compliant with all of our rules, you know, the government rules. But let's get those things identified and figure out how we're going to measure them, where are we today, where we want to be. Okay? Another one is that we should be cost-neutral perhaps to the city. We want to generate revenue from sales, but we also want to make that up because we have losses on the parking spots. But I think if we get those things defined and we understand where those are, your scope definition will be very straightforward to get defined. But until we get that, we will have difficulty and challenges in this group and everywhere with getting that scope defined. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Good evening. Kyle Ransford. Figured out today I'm a 29-year resident now.
New guy.
Happened to be a partner and manager of eight different commercial properties, six of which in the downtown. So I have 17 tenants. I was founder of Bank of Manhattan. We banked a lot of the establishments downtown. So I have a storied background of the economics and the way that the downtown works as a symbiotic relationship between all the different uses that we're talking about and so forth. I'm in favor of outdoor dining for sure. I think the city, you know, the residents have spoken to that. I've been one of those two to 10 people at a couple of the meetings. I think the outdoor task force is off to a good start and very well-intentioned about what they're trying to do. A couple of the concerns that, that I have going for, you know, it's nuanced. I could talk for 20 minutes. So I'm going to try to stay at the top level of, of things. But the way that I, I kind of foresee the process going and the questions that are getting asked of you tonight suggest, you know, an outcome that's, that's, that's going to get studied and then get in front of you for approval or disapproval versus sort of a wider angle lens of what might be possible here. We're, I'm a manager of one of the properties that we're talking about of the public right-of-way. There's lots of pros and cons to the, to this approach. It's not a bad piece. I'm personally much more in favor, though, of, of making sure that the task force and the council and city staff is looking at what I call open-air dining, of having more outdoor dining onsite. There's a number of things, simple things within the code that could be done to accomplish the outdoor dining feel that I think residents are after. But it doesn't have to be in the street, and it doesn't have to impair our parking and make us go to a one-way downtown. There's lots that can be done with simple changes in the code to encourage development of onsite outdoor dining.
Good seeing you, Kyle. Glad you made it. Our next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Suzanne Lerner. I'm a downtown resident since 1987, and I live at 124 10th Street, directly next to Dubuilla Rasa. So I want to tell you a story. I am on my patio up and hear a lot of noise and hear garbage trucks all day. I'm down on my patio and I see tourists and guests and residents walking downtown street to get to the beach. Kind of the entry to the beach. The owner of the properties that are on, right on Manhattan 10th Street has made beautiful gardens for people to enjoy. I have a cactus garden that hasn't been watered in 20 years. And people stop and comment on it. Little kids, people are tying on their sneakers. They're, have just gone to the beach. They're coming up with their families. They're dragging their wagon. Do you want to see outdoor dining on those encroachments permanently, which end up becoming grandfathered in to the owner's property? So you lose the value completely as a, a city. It no longer is public property. It is commercial. You build beautiful benches that people sit on, eat. The people can't always afford it. I think this is getting to be a town of people that can afford it. And I don't think the Coastal Commission is looking for that. I think they want to see public seating. And the more you get rid of public seating, the less we're going to have the environment that they're going to be wanting. So I, I just want you to think about that. I've got 40 seconds. That kind of came, so I just want you to preserve public access. Think about the density. Thank you so much, everybody, for speaking about, in fact, we need to think what we want. And just because we want outdoor dining doesn't mean we have to have outdoor dining. We're a small little town, and one-way streets don't work, and trucks all over the place don't work. And a lot of employees, along with guests that come to this town, need a place to park. And I think that's where the intensity has come from. It's wonderful having our parking back. Thank you so much for doing that, extending that at the end of February. Every space is filled all the time. So I don't know where you're going to get rid of these spaces. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Suzanne. Our next speaker. Jim, anybody else? No one in chambers? Martha, anybody on Zoom?
Neil Levitt.
All right.
Hi. Can, can you hear me?
All good, Neil.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and Council for attention to this. I know it's a very complex subject and a lot of the strong feelings on all sides. And, you know, I want to commend the task force for the, the effort in trying to address so many different issues. But the reality are that there are a tremendous number of issues, and frankly, they probably go well beyond the ability of the task force to address them in the time allotted. But, you know, most importantly, the set of recommendations we have right now is so premature in terms of its addressing the costs, the implications. We have a number of circumstances, and, and they've been discussed earlier tonight and on other occasions in terms of trucks and vermin and trash that are not adequately addressed, have not been able to be adequately addressed. Enforcement, which has never been adequately addressed. It's a burden to the residents rather than being maintained proactively by the city. And yet we're talking about, well, we understand. Everybody loves outdoor dining. We like outdoor dining too. The question is, at what cost and where does it fit? And I'm not saying that it's not possible, but we have to spend far more time and energy focusing on how we address the current impacts and the limitations, and a lot less energy talking about things that will be ultimately potentially very destructive to the character and nature of this downtown area and that are irreversible. It will never move backwards. So while we understand, I mean, the idea of more open-air dining, if we can mitigate the sound, that's a wonderful idea. Shuttles and things like that have really nothing to do with the core issue, which is if we can't build enough parking to accommodate everyone, nor should we, because we will only increase and intensify the impact. And that impact, we have not been able to manage up till now. I don't really understand how we can talk about dramatically increasing it for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Hit the post. All right. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else in chambers? Seeing non-post public comment, council? Who's our first speaker? Who's up first? Who wants to go first? Don't all push the button at once. It's okay. Anyone?
I'm.
Napolitan wants to go first up? All right.
Can you throw the slide back up, though, as far as what's being asked to, because I, I, all these things come with caveats? I'll wait. As far as direction goes, it was the last slide. Yeah. So as far as the, the program scope, you know, eating and drinking establishments only, I'm open to others. I, I agree that we need some more public spaces. I think public spaces could also address some of the eating and drinking establishment needs. But I'm clear with that for now. I, I reserve the right on all these to change my mind at a future point if things aren't going as I feel they should. But I'm fine with that scope. Citywide on private property, there could be some exceptions to that too if someone comes forward with them. I can think of a couple right now, but if they're not jockeying for them, I don't feel the need to point them out. Downtown North End only for public property, again, if someone brings a case for a different business, I'm open to considering that. Inclusive of Walk Street Commercial Corners, I'm not approving that at this point. I would like to really get a sense of what the adjacent property owners, and not just the owners, but the people who live there, because they might be renters, really feel about that before we go down that road. I would like to get that information. Again, that would be a, a micro survey of sorts. The survey, I think it's premature to consider a survey. One-way street analysis, I think it's premature for that as well. And having served on the subcommittee that dealt with a lot of these issues during COVID, in fact, resulting in the street closure, you know, we tried, we experimented. It was really rejected strongly by the community at the end of the day. And one-way street, you know, where there are multiple lanes, it can make sense. I mean, we've all driven downtown LA and everything else. But I, I have significant safety concerns with that, with evacuation, with the emergency access to meet any of our, our needs during any of our special events, MB Open being the most recent one. So I, I really, I don't see that as some, as money well-spent. I think it will be rejecting. And I appreciate that it was a, a poll during a, a meeting. But given my experience with the, the street closure and, and the discussions there, I mean, two things you don't mess with are people's houses and people's commutes. And we've found that out with road diets in the past. And so this is a type of road diet. I, I would love to widen the sidewalks. It would be at the expense of parking possibly. I don't know what the width of every street is down there. If we could squeeze even a couple more feet on either side, I'm for that. But I don't think that we need to look at a one-way street analysis to do that. I would rather see what the physical layout of the downtown currently is and seeing how we can reconfigure something there. Some of the angled parking could be parallel parking. There could be other alternatives, but I just, I, I believe we know enough from people's past reactions regarding traffic down there that a one-way street, while it would be a way to achieve a goal, I, I think it would cause other negative impacts and possibly the lack of support for this. Thank you, Ron.
Well said. Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes, thank you. So I'll, I'll go through the same list, so we can keep that slide there. As far as eating and drinking establishments only, that seems like a good idea. That's kind of what our experience was during COVID. We didn't have retailers wanting to have outdoor decks, so it's mostly for the eating and drinking establishments. Citywide on private property, so I would assume that that means something like we saw for Grunion's and what we saw for the Big Walk and things, things like that. And, and one of your favorites, I know, is The Hanger.
Of course.
You know, so, yes.
World Cup. Great place to watch the World Cup.
Okay, so that looks good. Downtown and North End only for public property, I think that's a, that's fine. The Walk Street Commercial Corners, that's going to be, what's the word I'm trying to find? It's, it's going to be against the status quo. The status quo that many people have experienced, enjoyed, maybe made decisions to live downtown, have made. So that I'm a little less enamored of. The, the additional consultant work, we were inundated with people who, who want, and I think, I think you, Councilmember Napolitan, you asked, you know, who are you going to ask? Is it going to be for the statistically valid community survey? Is it just going to be downtown or whatever? But it's got to be citywide because everybody citywide enjoyed it and wanted it. Not everybody, but a good number enjoyed it and wanted it. So if it comes to such a survey, it of course has to include the entire city. The one-way street analysis, I think that's just a bridge too far for, for all of us to go, go to. Your comments about the road diets and messing with commute in people's homes, I think are valid. So I really would not support that. Need, you know, really good data that, you know, Mr. Kampa, you know, indicated in terms of who's interested in this from, from those dining and eating establishments. What might the cost be? Where can we put it? You know, how many more seats would be provided by, by such, by such a program? And I also too, I, I measured when those ducts, decks were up, and I did a lot of measuring of, in fact, I think I went with you, Mr. Burton, a couple of times and went out and used my 12-inch-long foot as, as an improper, maybe inaccurate tape measure. But we saw that we could, you know, take out the parking meters and, and extend out for one table width. You know, it's not going to be like two ta, two sets, two long line, or two lines of tables out into the street. Probably just one, and it's reasonable, and you can preserve some of the parking, you know, by instead of having diagonal on one portion of Manhattan Beach Boulevard, you could, you could convert that to parallel parking. And I know that traffic engineer, I know that brings other issues, is that parallel parking tends to take people longer and can block, block the street more. That's why we like diagonal. But anyway, all those things can be considered. And would, would really like to nail down what we could offer as other amenities, you know, other service amenities to visitors to, you know, and it's not just keeping the, the Coastal Commission happy, but just, you know, it's, it's keeping our visitors who want to come here and enjoy it. They can come here for dinner, or they can come here and sit on a bench in a park and things like that. So, thank you.
Did you answer, Joe, about the, your favor of the survey and/or anything else?
It would be no at this point. You know, maybe later on down.
Councilman Holworth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Community Director Talen, Ms. Conian. Sorry, Marza Conian. Thank you for, for bringing this to us at this point. I mean, one of the things that, you know, we were worried about at the beginning, well, I wasn't here when it was formed, but you don't want a task force to get too far out ahead. And then all of a sudden, you know, six months passed the time, council says, wait, what are you doing? So I really appreciate how you're managing this process. And it's not an easy thing to do. So thank you for that. I also appreciate Kyle and Stefan's independent comments about, you know, try to think about this from a wider angle, you know, from a higher-up perspective of the outcome. You know, what might be possible? And I, that is probably, we're probably too far down a certain path for some of it. But, you know, does the city say it has to be cost-neutral? I don't know. But is it neutral in parking? Probably because of, you know, the Coastal Committee or Commission. But it really, it got me thinking when Kyle mentioned onsite open-air dining, because we do have a few restaurants that do have that now, right? And what it made me think, are we trying to achieve some, you know, people say they want outdoor dining. Does that mean outdoor dining decks? Or to Mayor Protem's comment, do some establishments have one or two extra tables because you've moved, removed the parking meters? So I'm not sure yet we, we have answered that question. And I think that's something, you know, I, I, I hope that you're talking about it in the task force. It doesn't have, you know, it could be this big thing. It could be a smaller thing. And I, I do think though, I'm agnostic about one-way. I'm not saying I want one-way streets. I am saying let's do the study so we see what it would do for the question of outdoor dining. Does it actually provide more room for, you know, widening those sidewalks? People have talked about widening the sidewalks, but then let's talk about, well, how do we accommodate that then? And talk about getting data. You would get data by doing a traffic, by doing that study. So I am in support of. So I am in support of, whatever you're calling it, you know, the one-way traffic study. I really appreciate what my colleague, Stephen Napolitano, said about, he's not in favor of it because of the commute, public safety, and the events that we have. I want to understand, though, are those, you know, are those things truly impacted by, you know, what, in the modern traffic study and in the new scope that we're thinking about? Or not new scope, but this vision that we have. So I am in favor of that. I do agree that this, while I do think a valid community survey, statistically valid community survey could be useful, I, I think it's either premature or like not sure what we're asking. So I'm not really in favor of that at this time. So I am in favor of the one-way street analysis. Now, I agree with Councilmember Napolitano on his, the top bullet point questions, where I think this is what you said, yeah, eating and drinking establishments only, sure, but it could be a CUP where somebody comes forward and says, what if they're a nail salon, you know, and they want to do some outdoor things? That could work. Citywide on private property, I think it was, the caller, I think it was Neil Levinson, who mentioned this, is a really slippery slope. But I do think, and maybe we make it conditional use, or does it have to travel with the owner of that? Is that, can I ask that question, actually? I saw you guys shaking your heads, but for those of you at home. So let's say you grant to a restaurant the right to put four tables on, you know, citywide property. Does that use travel to the next owner of that?
So you mean on private property for an establishment that currently has a use permit? So that's part of the discussions we're having with the task force right now. Do we require the, the citywide ones on private property to amend their use permit? That is a very expensive and time-consuming process. Is there an alternative to that? Those are things we're talking about right now. And then translating that to the public property. Typically, you don't use, use permits to govern anything outside of private property. There are other vehicles for that, encroachment permits, for example. That's the type of vehicle you would use to govern anything on city property. And then you would, you know, connect it to the establishment because you, the city enters into an agreement with that establishment for the use of that public property. And then the, you know, conditions of that use are outlined in, in an encroachment agreement.
And that would change if all of a sudden that restaurant sold? Would the next restaurant have to?
They would have to re-enter, just like we do with private property encroachment agreements, actually along the walk-streets. It's governed similarly, where with every new owner, we have to enter into a new encroachment agreement with that property owner.
And, but I would support the walk-street commercial corners that have been identified. So for what, what it's worth. I can't quite put it all together in a motion, but that's where I'm going.
Okay. Councilwoman Lesser?
I'm going to try and go in summary fashion, just because I want to see if we can get a motion and to give staff direction. With the top-line items, with regard to eating and drinking establishments, I agree with comments made earlier. I think that would be the presumption. I don't want to preclude someone making an application for some other usage, but I think that should be the focus of the task force to keep them moving forward. With regard to citywide on private property, I'm receptive, but we need to see what that's going to entail. And I appreciate the community development director's comments about how that might be limited, so it's not just something that runs with the land indefinitely, to address one of the earlier speaker's comments. With regard to the walk-street commercial corners, I have concerns. I'm not going to say no, but when one thinks of the potential impacts on residents close to those corners that have heretofore not have outdoor dining experiences right next to their residences, it's going to change the character of their neighborhood. So I think we need to have more information. I'd be curious how the task force proposes to address that and some of the safeguards. But I would be concerned, but want to hear what they wanted to say. With regard to a survey, I agree with the other comments. I think it's premature and not needed at this time. With regard to the one-way street analysis, I'd like to hear from staff what additional data they need, not just limited to one-way streets, if they need more data. In my exchange earlier with the community development director, she indicated that at present, they think they have sufficient resources. But if there is a realization, as they're going through this task force process, that more is needed, come back and request it. Finally, I would like to encourage council, whoever's going to make a motion, to direct staff to begin looking at some of these impacts. They are already, as indicated, of vehicles parked and loading and unloading off-hours. Is this, and does this call out for a need for further, excuse me, further restrictions of some kind? Or is this a staffing issue with regard to enforcement? What can we do? Because I think we're going to have a lot more buy-in with whatever we produce if we at least can offer some greater assurances to those living downtown. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You're welcome. Steve, why don't you go, and I'll wrap up.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's part of my rhetorical question, theme and comment as well, but Director, Mr. Compa, I mean, you brought up the question, goals, right? The issue, we need to set a goal. And so outdoor dining has been said to be the goal, but I guess my question is, has the task force defined and have we defined what outdoor dining is? And I'll say that in the context of this, that, you know, some restaurants have remodeled themselves to include an open front. Is that outdoor dining? Some people it is. Some people, they want to see a view of the pier. So unless they have a view of the pier and the sun on their head, they're not outdoor dining. But some other restaurants have remodeled and have a flat front with glass on them. They haven't had the patio space in front, like Esperanza, like Hennessy's, like some others, right? And so the base question I think we need to really address is, are we interested in outdoor dining or expansion of dining? They're not necessarily mutually exclusive, but let's be honest, when we have a discussion about this, are we talking about expansion of dining? Because outdoor dining, as we've known it through COVID, was supposed to replace dining lost inside. Now it's going to be, and what has been sought from some is an expansion of that dining, an intensification of uses, we talked about, which brings more people, more use, more trash, more everything. More people, more problems, right? And so, you know, the question I think we need to face is, is can it be done without a loss of parking spaces? We've heard there are, you know, code changes that could be made. We can get rid of the meters, I brought that up before. Expand maybe the sidewalk a foot or two, and you can, a four-top out there. Maybe it's not five or six, seven tables, but three or four per restaurant. What is our goal? Because just outdoor dining as we had it, or is it, no, we're going to have outdoor dining, but it's going to be scaled to what we know is within the character of the Manhattan Beach downtown that we've known, or North End? Or is it going to be something radically different, where we're talking one-way streets, where we're talking about, you know, taking up parking spaces and things like that, having to replace it and shuttle systems and all that? What is outdoor dining for us?
I'd like to address the first part of your question by saying that.
Good, because I can't remember what it was. Outdoor dining.
So we, we do have opportunities, and we've discussed this with the task force. There are currently opportunities that eating and drinking establishments have available if they wanted to invest in, you know, major structural changes to be able to incorporate some form of outdoor dining, dining on private property. So we are going through this process with the one establishment right now, and the types of challenges that these businesses in downtown and North End face in trying to either build a second-floor dining deck or, you know, open up, open up the downstairs area, more so if they're trying to build a second-floor dining deck, is that they have very limited spaces and you, the second you introduce a second floor, now you have to talk about an elevator to be able to provide ADA access to your second floor. And then it potentially could be increasing your parking demand, which requires you to show, demonstrate some form of addressing that parking discrepancy. And so for multiple reasons, that becomes financially challenging for private businesses to invest in a second floor. And again, those opportunities are there if the, you know, particular eating and drinking establishment owner wants to invest that kind of money into making that available. At our, at first.
So has it been discussed to waive or change the parking requirement if they go second-story rather than taking parking spaces on the street?
We could, we could absolutely do that. In fact, those are things, we have vehicles available for that right now, I would say. And that's why a lot of these discussions kind of level out, because we have parking reductions available you could ask for. We have shared parking, you could ask for via use permit. We have a lot of vehicles available for that right now. If someone wanted to pursue that, we do have someone in the process of doing that right now. But as we discussed this last meeting with the task force, and we, you know, generally started talking about occupancy issues, it, it became clear to us at our initial polling that the interest, you know, from the business community is to have increased occupancy, otherwise investing on their end doesn't make sense. So that was the general discussion that we had, that we had this last meeting. And it was clear to us that they, if there is no increase in occupancy, then their investment in this doesn't financially balance out.
Good. You good?
Yep. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. I'll put it together, leave Councilwoman Lesser the person to tie it up in different knots for us, but going forward. Leaving your item up there, Director Marzakonian, Senior Penney, good job. I think you guys have done the best you could to get it to this point. And no one is ready to go full out, one direction or the other. I'll focus on the ones I don't agree with. And I'll start the first one with the includes all walk-street commercial corners. Existing, yes. Future expansion, no. I'm not so focused on Director, Councilman Napolitano's comments. I think I'm not so focused on the costs as, and that we get it right. I don't care if it takes me six more months. And the reason why I say that is during COVID, when Steve and I tried this idea of one-way streets, we didn't know it would work out. We thought, hey, let's try it, right? We're all trying for new ideas. How do we help a restaurant survive? And what, when to go creative? We're not LA, we don't have thousands of streets to play with. But we tried it, okay? Didn't work out well. We found out later it was a terrible, not the idea wasn't thought was a good idea, it was the actual production of it wasn't what we thought it'd be. So lesson learned, chalk it up. But it taught me valuable, I'm not in favor of one-way streets at all. And not because of Mike Bonin and, and Vistit Omar and the road diets, which is total catastrophe. But we fixed that. So seeing that lesson about road diets and watching what happens here, I think will totally change the structure of what we're trying to do. So no on one-way streets. I'm open to the survey part of it for sure. And Kyle, your point about, I like the European, well, the open-air dining to me is different than dining decks. If you go to Europe, you sit outside and you don't look at a deck when you sit out there and eat. So I like all those options. I don't want to handcuff Director Marzakonian or Senior Penney, or any of our people. I like to have all options out there. But at the same time, I don't want to transform all of downtown North End because of it. And I think the fact that we're having the downtown business rep here and Kyle here and not the restaurant owners, because no one has really set where we're going to go yet. I caution on that because during COVID, you saw people like Mike Sims and his restaurants, not to pick on Mike, but, or boost Mike, he built a beautiful Arthur J. Want to call it a deck? I don't. I call it a, a expansion of someone's house.
Pavilion.
Pavilion. It was a beautiful, you would never know how long it was built. You'd swear it was built there 10 years ago, right? And look at Fishery with Dynamite, they did there. You would never know it was new. You saw others, and I won't mention their names. But they used plywood over a week at a Home Depot and built it. And I said, man, what a difference. So to Steve's point, what does outdoor dining mean to me? Open-air. Yes, you can have decks on the slant streets where you can't make it level. Safety. We saw some people, I won't mention names, who put their propane tanks right next to the other cooking facilities, which are fire and martial, thank you, kicked them out and said, you can't do this. But they did it for a while, so we kicked them out, said you couldn't do it. And also consistency, sustainability, that's looking for. If you go to Park Cities, Utah, is one example, look what they did. Yes, guns are designed it, guns are held to hand through it, but you meet all the criteria. Open-air, they have decks too, they're safe, they don't slide around, there's no propane tanks next to your knees, and they're consistent. So that's sustainable. So you meet all the criteria, then I'll go with you all the way. But with that, I don't want to change the character of my mind by expanding the walk-street corners. That was a bad idea. No on one-way streets. But I would go for the survey itself. I'm curious to see, like, we saw the True North survey tonight, and there were things, forget the pie charts for a second, but all the data they gave us, gave us a good overview of what people are actually telling, not just calling us, but it's a good overview of what the residents see. I'd rather have that in my pocket than guess what the east side or the west side or downtown's thinking, or North End's thinking. So that's kind of overview. But I would think, Councilwoman Lesser, if you're going to make a motion, you break out these top four, then bottom two.
I'm chuckling, Mr. Mayor, because I just wanted to opine on the question of outdoor dining and what it is, and pick up on your and Councilmember Napolitano's comments. So I'll make that, and then I'm going to try and make a motion, because I'd like to move this forward. I think when I speak to people about outdoor dining, they're often thinking of using the, the public right-of-way and having sun and having the air and having the view. And the problem, why this city has dealt with this issue well before the pandemic and had challenges, is what we're hearing in microcosm this evening. Because inevitably, that increases use, it increases occupancy, it increases noise, it increases vehicles, and it has an impact on the quality of life for residents. And it's not what everyone wants for our downtown community. Nonetheless, I think what we're looking for is a balance. So outdoor dining, no question, includes making it easier for private property owners to expand their footprint of their property, to allow for outdoor dining, making it easier for them in one way or another, as I love the, the reference to vehicles that was referenced. Opportunities for private property owners to expand their private property to allow for outdoor dining, but also thinking about the public right-of-way. And of course, that might involve city funds, and that's going to be a more difficult conversation. How do we afford to expansions of our sidewalk? Who's going to pay for it? There'll be winners and losers. Some restaurants will be able to make use of the sidewalks, others won't. How do we allocate those costs? So there'll be more complicated discussions later, but when I think of outdoor dining, I think it has to do with public right-of-way. A motion, I'd like to make a try unless someone else wants to.
No, go for it. I was just.
And I'm not sure if there'll be consensus. I've heard some differences of opinion, but I'm going to try. Using the checklist, I would propose, make a motion that the consensus of council at this time, subject to further information from staff and the outdoor task force, dining task force, if they want to come back, is presently the recommended program space would be eating and drinking establishments only. Presently, it would be citywide on private property, that we would be receptive to some sort of solution that would not necessarily run with the land, but that will allow staff to continue to explore with the task force, some sort of opportunity that's limited in its scope and duration. And then with regard to public, private, public property inclusive of walk-street commercial corners, I think we need more information before we're able to say yes or no. And let's see if there's any support for that or a friendly amendment. But at this time, the task force and staff would need to answer some of these concerns that inevitably residences are going to have adjacent. With regard to the additional consultant scope of work, at this time, I'm not prepared to support a survey. I think, as was mentioned earlier, notwithstanding some of the positive comments about the survey, and I'm open to a survey, we don't have enough of a plan yet for what we're asking the, the community to weigh in on. And then finally, with regard to a one-way street analysis, I would not be in support of it, because I'm not hearing from staff that they need the additional data at this time. So that would be my motion, subject to.
Push your button.
I have a question. I pushed my button.
I'm talking to him.
I know.
Councilman Holworth first, then Mayor Tim Franklin second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're doing a wonderful job of running this meeting.
It's not midnight.
Your, your motion, I was, you know, following it, so you support the eating and drinking establishments only, citywide on private property. Did you mention downtown and North End only for the public property? I don't think you did.
I don't think I did. I think I'm hearing from most, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So the answer to that would be yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor Tim Franklin?
And then the friendly amendment about the delivery trucks.
Yes, thank you. I even made the comment earlier, trying to reflect the consensus here. Thank you for that. And this would also be direction to staff. And this would also be direction to staff to explore, as was mentioned earlier, um, the impacts of these delivery trucks and parking and whether we need more restrictions or more enforcement tool in the way of staff or something else. Thank you.
So Juan, I have clarification. I'm fine with hold more information inclusive of walk street, commercial corner. Just put a hold, big H for that one. As far as the survey, we don't know when the survey was going to be going out. We thought the question was to have that approval for when you need it. But you want to bring it back once we're down a farther path, that's a different question.
That is correct.
Okay. So it's a future use. All right, but I'm good with the rest of it and I'll take my stuff back. In your motion, I see a motion by Counselor Lesser, as noted, uh, a second by Mayor Tim Joe Franklin. Any other council questions, comments? See none? Voting screen, please. Ready to go? Want us to do it again?
No.
All right, it's 5-0. Well, that was easy. I was waiting. I was going to make sure it copped up there, it disappeared.
What did it?
There you go.
Wow, that's great. There it goes. Ah, thank you very much. Thank you all. Appreciate that.
Great job, Steph.
All right, folks. After that one, a shot of espresso for Counselor Hillworth. On number 16, consideration of resolution proven and agreement for prosecutorial, prosecutorial services as needed with the report from City Manager Mo.
George Gabriel will do the honors.
All right.
Uh, Honorable Mayor Montgomery, members of the city council, George Gabriel, Assistant to the City Manager. This item comes before you tonight, uh, by way of request from the June 20th, 2023 city council meeting. Uh, at that meeting, we provided a report summarizing, uh, efforts on state prosecution, or state misdemeanor prosecution and homeless court services. Following discussions, city council requested staff explore reinforcing the city's prosecuting services. And so from time to time, the city delegated criminal prosecution or other legal services to special counsel. As such, staff has identified two proposals for council consideration to address prosecution of crimes, uh, to be prosecuted as a misdemeanor. Uh, some of these crimes include trespassing, graffiti, illegal shopping carts, public urination, public nuisance, and, uh, smoking in public. In addition, the following crimes can be prosecuted as an infraction, drinking in public, unlicensed dogs, unvaccinated dogs, unleashed dogs, dogs on the beach. So as noted in the attached proposals, each firm's experience in performing prosecutorial services, uh, the, the proposals will authorize, uh, either firm to prosecute, um, criminal violations and perform such services as requested by the city attorney, city manager, or their designees. Both proposals all provide services related to civil investigations, obtaining warrants, and filing civil actions, uh, specifically under the municipal code. Uh, staff recommends that the city council discuss and provide direction regarding the two proposals and, uh, also consider adopting draft resolution 23-0100, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement, uh, or agreements in accordance with council direction. That will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Start off with Counselor Napolitano first.
Thank you. I saw the early rate, but maybe in the future we can include for fiscal implications what the hourly rate is for, for these folks. I guess what I'm missing here is the reason why we're doing it. It was provided to us in, uh, under attorney-client privilege as far as what our misdemeanors are now, what have been referred to the district attorney, what the district attorney has turned down. I think that would give the public a more, uh, like better understanding of, uh, what we're looking to do here and, and I think it would inform the decision here. I also think that, you know, one of the, the things that we talked about before and bring this back was widening some of the definitions of what nuisances, um, public nuisances under our code would be so that we could broaden what we could prosecute. And actually, I'd rather see that before we approve this. I'd rather see, you know, what we can include under public nuisance because that would expand the prosecution needs that we have. And also, I would like to provide the context to the public as to, uh, what we've done already with, with prosecution service, what the DA has done, what they haven't done. I would hold this off, Your Honor. I, I would like this to be a more robust, um, uh, report and something that the public can see as to, well, you know, do we need to do this? Do we not, based on what's being prosecuted, what isn't? And then can we bring back what an expansion of public nuisance might be so then we could decide if we want to do our own prosecution under that expanded definition of it? So to me, it's premature to do this right now until we know that we're going to be effective in spending this money.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Franklin?
Uh, yes, thank you. My thoughts are along the same way because I, I spent time with this and just tried to correlate, uh, the spreadsheet of the list of, um, uh, the, the, what do we call it? Quality of life crimes, description of the crime. And I could really only find, um, about three items, uh, when you compare it against, you know, our, the county district, district attorney's 20-07, um, directives. And it really only covers like one or two. And all the others that are on the directive just are not covered by this type of prosecution. So I guess that's what we asked for, you know, is what, what is the overlay? You know, can we pursue some things on our own? And that goes to your definition, Counselmember Napolitano, about, um, the definition of nuisance. So, um, I, I too would like to see some more information about this and to fill it out a little bit and maybe this might be a path to controlling more of our own prosecution, but, but not as it is now, okay? Because it just doesn't cover enough.
You good? Counselor Lesser?
I wanted to pose the emerging con, comments of my colleagues to staff and perhaps our city attorney. And I'm not sure who's in the best position to answer this, is to what extent can we get a more complete presentation consistent with what was just indicated as to what we're looking for? And the way I was going to put it in my questions, which were along the same lines, is how are members of the community going to notice a difference? That's the first thing. And I just wonder if there might not be an opportunity to come back and be, provide a little bit more complete presentation.
Yep, I'll address that.
Microphone.
Up to a point. Uh, there's, we've been discussing Gascon now for about two years or maybe longer about the type of crimes that he will not prosecute and the state misdemeanors. And we went through an exercise of trying to get consent to do that. If we had gotten that consent, it would be a different staff report. But we did not get that consent and so there's, um, the staff report identifies the type of cases that can be handled by, um, by special counsel as a, you know, prosecution firm. I'm not sure what more we can add other than the nuisance issue. See nuisance in our code is related to basically nuisances that are property-related. And so that's, and that was one of the points of the, of the staff report. That's something that we would explore with special counsel. But if the council wants to defer this action, uh, that's fine and we can do that research. How can we expand, uh, the nuisance section and give you, um, an answer to that?
Let me also ask you, Mr. City Attorney, you and I have privately spoken about what your firm is capable of doing with regard to prosecutorial services. To what extent are some of the services that are anticipated to be utilized with the potentially at-will contracts with these other firms, are actions that your firm could potentially do with its existing staff? And I believe it does act in prosecutorial functions for some of its cities that it serves?
Yeah. Richards Watson has done prosecution services for a number of cities, but also in a number of our cities, we've, um, the cities have hired special counsel to focus on, on prosecution.
Okay.
So we've got both.
Thank you.
Counselor Hillworth?
Thank you. So one of the things, when you look at the staff report, page two, which is page 684 of our binder, and it talks about the following crimes, and, and this is to Counselmember Napolitano's point, that can be prosecuted as a misdemeanor. It's trespassing, graffiti, you know, public urination, public nuisance, smoking in public, uh, which gives us as a city some tools, you know, when we have people who are, um, continuing to do these things over and over again. But I would want to be really clear, um, and, you know, I'm fine withholding it, uh, and coming back, as Counselmember Napolitano said, but I also, in some ways, think a staff report should include both Gascon's 20-07, uh, special directive, as well as kind of the, the Prop 47 language. Because I actually think that that's, um, something that is affecting our ability to keep criminals in jail, put criminals in jail, get them off our streets, um, for other crimes, um, that are, are more serious, whether it's shoplifting, stealing, uh, et cetera. So I, I, I think we have an opportunity here to do some education. Not that that's going to make people feel safe, but I think we have to do that. And I do want to find a way to address these things. I'm a little, I'm a little nervous about the unleashed dogs piece, but that's just a little too much self-disclosure there. But, uh, you know, I think that I, I do appreciate what Counselmember Napolitano said. I'd like to see this come back with nuisance kind of fleshed out, but also these other things that make it hard for us as a city to conduct the type of public safety that maybe we would like to do, so.
You good?
Always.
Okay. I'll, I'll take a different tact. I think we've been talking about this, folks, since August 1st. That was our last meeting. Nothing changed. You saw, I think, the city attorney fleshed out with the peer and, and the firm on what they could do. So I think Counselor Hillworth said it right. If you looked at page, what is that? Two? On page five, 584?
Six eighty-four.
Are you right. Trespassing, graffiti, illegal shopping cart, public urination, public nuisance, smoking, public, those today, right now, today, which gives you leverage, not that people say you're not doing enough, not, we're not helping our police get this done the way they want to do it. Forget the county. This is ourselves today, right now, right? So there are things we can't do yet because we haven't written our ordinance yet, which is what we use the firm and the peer, whoever, to do for us. So all we're saying now is bring back more information, but we could do a lot of it ourselves between now and our next meeting, we can always have all these done. So it's your point of view. Do you want to delay it for more clarification? Or do you want us to keep reading what we can do at every public meeting and put it on our email, I mean, our city website? Here's what we can do today. Here's what we can do for a month from now. Here's what we can do, we come back with more information. So to me, I'm not a kick the, I don't want to kick the can because we want more information. I understand the information part of it, but we've had a month to get here. I don't know what more City Attorney Barrow can give us, aside the spreadsheet with different colors. So here's what we can do now, here you do later on. So if you ask me my opinion, I'd say we should start now on things we know we can do without anything in the way. If you want to add stuff to it, that's your option down the road. All we're doing now is delaying getting someone in here to, has expertise to help us to get there. And while someone complains we're not doing anything, we'll say, look, this is what we're doing right now. We are making a difference. We're using our own toolbox and going after it. But if anyone wants to delay for more information, that's up to you for. But I'm not going, I don't want to delay any longer than we've done it. Counselor Napolitano?
Yeah, let me pose it in the alternative, though, because we, to my knowledge, have used Richard Watson Gershon as our prosecution services to this point and the lack of others that, once the, our prosecutor merged more into a diversion. And so I don't know what they've prosecuted for us, but while we get more information, we could authorize Richard Watson Gershon to act as our prosecutor to prosecute these things. And if we want to, um, then engage one of these other prosecutors to have a separate down the line, we can, while we get from them, uh, what a expanded nuisance, um, definition could be. So we could still prosecute these things in the meantime without having to, uh, enter into a contract with a new entity while we look at these other items.
Makes sense. Do you want to ask that question for City Attorney Barrow? Go ahead, Mayor Tim Franklin, go ahead. You're going to ask that question. Go ahead, you get to ask it.
Okay. Well, I, I also want the public to understand that these are, um, treated as administrative citations. You can't get anybody, you can't, nobody's going to be placed in jail as you would or potentially, you know, with a regular misdemeanor if it were prosecuted by the county attorney. So, um, it, it isn't going to get the people off the streets necessarily, it's going to give them a.
The top ones can.
Yes.
The top ones can be misdemeanors. The others are infractions or the administrative.
Yeah, so trespassing and the other ones can be administrative.
Exactly.
So it's not all, you know, people serving time, you know, as, as the, um, you know, as the, uh, what, the carrot and the?
Stick.
Stick, as the stick.
I agree. I mean, expectations should be managed here, given what the offenses are here, but I would pose the question to our city attorney if that is a possible, possibility here that we can, uh, use your firm as prosecution services, uh, as we flush this out more.
Yes, definitely. And we can provide more information. I like the comments of all the council members on, next time this comes back, um, you know, additional information about, um, Prop 47, the directives and nuisance, we'll, we'll see what we can do on expanding nuisance. I'm not sure we can do that, but we can certainly explore it.
But in the meantime, we can use.
Yes. Yes.
Just a clarification question. I appreciate that, Steve. Thank you. Do we need a motion to make that happen or do you, it's enough direction for you to start this?
Yes, no, that's enough direction for me. Under the code, the city attorney is the city prosecutor and that's why we were talking about prosecution services as opposed to a city prosecutor. So, um, it sounds like you're just going to continue this item. We've got, um, enough information and enough direction from the council to come back with a report.
And yeah, so one more question. So you've got to bring that back in the next two weeks to us?
It's going to take longer than that.
The one being, see the peer and everybody back. Counselor Lesser?
I just wanted to confirm, it's been a while since I looked at your contract, Mr. City Attorney. I wanted to ensure that it includes within its scope prosecutorial services with the supplement that we're talking about tonight.
I think so, too.
Thank you.
So no other questions? We've got a public comment first. Thank you, George. Stand by. Public comment, yes, please.
Good evening. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Kevin Gress, um, with one of the proposals. I think the council made some excellent points in regards to expanding some of the definitions of the municipal code, uh, that would allow the city to prosecute and expand what it can prosecute. I think one of the key elements that I think the, uh, the council should consider as well is not just the substance of the municipal code that could be expanded, but also procedurally in court, uh, one thing that the mayor said, uh, earlier, I think while Steve was, was talking, uh, what, you know, the, the city has to control what it can and what it can't, it can't. I think philosophically, that's right where I stand on a lot of these issues as well. Zero cash bail, judicial diversion motions, new things that have popped up over the last two years under Gascon, you can only change so much, right? There's only so much authorization and jurisdiction this council has. But there are, I think, substantive and very practical pragmatic solutions, uh, not just in expanding the municipal code, but in, in how to prosecute these crimes, uh, that gets you to where you need to go. Um, and I've, I've, I've had conversations with other people about this, whether it's cash bail. You can't do cash bail, but you can still apply certain terms as to stay away locations, stay away from this, can't conduct business like this, that get the job done much quicker than civil litigation, um, or. litigation, or having the person have to post a $10,000 bond. Judicial diversion motions, oftentimes prosecutors from cities just blanketly oppose them. It's silly to do that, because it's a reality we have to deal with, but the prosecutors who impose, like, practical solutions and obligations to judicial diversion motions are the ones that have the best results. So I think that's something for the council to consider as well, and I just wanted to thank you for your time and for consideration of my proposal.
Thank you, very informative, appreciate that. Thank you. Bless you. Anybody else have public comment?
My wife is at home recovering from back surgery, and this is a very important issue for her. So she is, you know, works with the homeless and all those folks, right? So it's very important that we address this. You know, the way I look at this is that we're spending a lot of money on our police force, who are doing an excellent job. If we don't prosecute them, we're not spending our money wisely. We've got to do both ends of this. So it, to me, it's a no-brainer that we've got to go down this path. You know, the other item is, I was going to say on this one, I like the idea of expanding. I think the broader net we have, the better it is, and we're going to be able to do that. But I also think the third point here is, we have a public relations opportunity here with our community, that if we do this, we'll be able to communicate that we, as a counselor, are trying to do the right thing, right? And we need to capitalize on that, and I hope that Michael, who was here earlier, is listening to us tonight, taking good notes and trying to figure out how to put it in his newsletter. I hope somebody else from the Easy Reader, Beach Reporter, are listening to this, and will come to our next meeting and listen to it, and be able to publish it and inform our community, and seeing what we can do here to try to influence that to be communicated out. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker? How about on Zoom, Martha? Anyone on Zoom? None? All right. Close public comment, council?
Your Honor, I think we've got a...
I'll jump on it. I'll do it.
Oh, sorry. Well, I didn't know we needed a motion.
Oh, try, Quinn, send it in a motion. Never mind, Quinn. Sorry. Got so excited for that one.
This is already a city attorney.
I appreciate, Ken, your comments, because I think that the thing we're trying to teach people, no matter what it is, forget, our police do a great job of catching the bad guy, you know, and with the bad that we can't keep them, or keep them, and yet they come back to us. It's here by doing this, and thank you for saying that, actions have consequences. So we can maybe not keep them away for our city for a whole year, but if I can deter that person coming back here, three months, six months, nine months, I'll do it. That's, that's something we should have been doing. So now we're pushing that envelope all the way forward, saying, you want to help us at the county level, we'll do what we can ourselves. This is that motion to make it happen, so.
Your Honor, I think the headline here is that we're going to engage Richard Watson Gershon in a more robust prosecution services, and looking to expand the use of the public nuisance law to get more of the bad folks off the streets.
Yes, that's the headline with the subheading that says we're going to get you some help on the side there as well.
I'm sure Michael incorporated that.
Okay, so this, we'll come back after doing additional research, and we'll come back with another report, and at this time, it's, we'll just move on to the next item on the agenda.
One more pool to help our PD up there, and just again, I forgot to give a shout out earlier, Steve, since we're talking about this area being the police up. Those of you who don't know this, the chief kept it quiet all weekend long, there was a famous football club here on the weekend. I won't mention names, but they wore pink jerseys. They were all over the city, but these people kept them safe and kept the thousands of people away from where they were staying, although there were players, Steve, that came down to the, down to our roundhouse in the aquarium, I found out, on the weekend, before their curfew. But they were here wearing pink jerseys for the last three days, so I want you to know that. So just little unsung things you don't want to tell everybody till after they're gone out of our city, but another good job, because that helps us. Besides Super Bowl, having a team like that in our city with nothing happening is a good thing, and also helps the TOT.
I thought I saw Counselor Horwath hanging around West Street.
No, no. If they're not, they're not LAFC, man, I'm not, I'm not...
With that said, we're going to move to item number 17. Emergency ordinance amending various sections of the municipal code relating to bicycles to clarify and establish safety and operational requirements for electric and motorized bicycles, led by our very own, who's going to talk about this, there's George Gabriel.
Honorable Mayor Montgomery, members of the city council, George Gabriel, assistant to the city manager. I'll try to make this as brief as I can, given the late hour, but basically this item is coming back to you following the August 1st, 2023 meeting, where city council requested revisions to the municipal code related to electronic bike regulations on an expedited basis. So we're coming back at the next possible meeting. And so in essence, the urgency ordinance that is being proposed has three basic revisions, but three categorized revisions within the staff report, but various revisions in there, because the current regulations regarding bicycles were adopted in 1961, and most recently amended in 1972. So the city attorney's office tried to do a comprehensive look at the municipal code and make a variety of revisions to that. Keep in mind, this is an urgency ordinance, and this does require a forfeit's vote in order for passage. So the key provisions of the urgency ordinance are related to safety and operational standards. Most notably within that, there is a requirement for helmets for all riders under 18 years old, regulations related to bikes, riding in marked bike lanes, streets without bike lanes, stopping for traffic signals yielding to pedestrians. The second category, the second provision within the urgency ordinance is locational restrictions. The ordinance prohibits e-bikes and motorized bicycles from the following locations: city sidewalks, and I should note that there is a pending legislation that may impact us there, where we're unsure how it would impact us, and we would have to come back and give an update to council on that. But city sidewalks, walk streets, plazas, grass areas, lawns, the civic center, LA County Library, Metlocks property, the strand, and parking structures and parking lots owned or operated by the city, county, or state. Third provision is related to the beach bicycle path, AKA the county bike path, where a 20 mile per hour speed limit is proposed within the ordinance, and so that would be the only place on the bike path. Actually, I should, let me correct myself. The other place, in addition to Hermosa Beach having a speed limit on the bike path, because Hermosa Beach has an eight mile per hour speed limit regulation on the bike path at a place where the pedestrians and bicycle path merges, and everywhere else on the county bike path there is no speed limit. So those are the three provisions, and obviously this is an urgency ordinance, and city attorney is proposing that a regular ordinance would come back at a later date. In addition, their council will, staff like council to consider adopting a resolution specifying fines, and so in essence, all violations would otherwise be a misdemeanor accordingly, but they would be done via the administrative citation process, and the proposed fines are, for the first violation, $500, for the second violation, $750, and then the third violation, $1,000 for each additional violation within one year of the first violation. So therefore, staff is recommending that the city council adopt urgency ordinance 23-008U, amending various sections of the municipal code to clarify and establish safety and operational requirements for electric and motorized bicycles, and two, adopt resolution 23-0120 specifying specific fines for violations of said urgency ordinance. That would conclude my report. Thank you.
Well said, George, well said. Let's turn off.
Mayor, just want to point out something that Bruce had mentioned. If you take a look at the prohibited areas...
Yes.
It talks about plazas, grass areas, lawns. Would like to add Veterans Parkway, just to be very precise.
Yeah.
There goes my question.
It's already in there, but I'd rather just keep it as precise as possible.
And while you're on, there's a attorney, and you say plazas, do you mean civic plazas? Any plaza, civic plaza?
Yeah.
Civic center, the Metlocks.
Doesn't say that.
That's going to be any plazas, but we already have the civic center in there.
That's Metlocks.
And so it's a good, it's a good question of whether there's, we have Metlocks, we have the civic center. I don't know if there's other plazas in the city, the mall, I don't know if that's considered to be a plaza. I don't know.
I'm good.
But it's better to be broader, and once again, this is an urgency ordinance, and we're waiting to see what the state does, so we'll probably come back, perhaps in January, with a permanent ordinance.
Okay. Don't wait, I'm, I'll wait, I'm sorry. Napolitanos first, then Counselor Lesser second.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two issues. One, did we talk to the school district and try to incorporate school district property except for designated areas where they park their bikes?
Not that I am aware of.
We might want to reach out to them, because there is some destruction. I've seen kids riding around in electric bikes on the field spaces on the weekends. We might want to talk to them. Also, the real name of it is the Marvin Browdy Bike Path, Bike Trail, rather than County Bike Path. But what, I have to question what our, in Hermosa Beach, because they own their own beach, and they have a, they don't have a county bike path, Marvin Browdy Bike Path is not part of Hermosa Beach, it stops there. Redondo is on one side, it picks up again, Marvin Browdy. We have the Marvin Browdy, it goes up to Will Rogers State Beach. But what is our ability really to set a speed limit there, or even to allow these at all? Because by saying there's a speed limit, we're actually allowing them to be on the bike path, when right now, county code, I believe, prohibits any motorized bicycles on the bike path, and there is no speed limit on the county bike path. So what is our ability to set?
It's the same as our streets. Like, so we have Sepulveda, which is a state highway, under the vehicle code, state delegated to the cities, I don't know where, I think the traffic engineer's left, but has, you do that survey on streets, and you can set speed limits. Back to the county, so I wasn't aware that the county, does they prohibit on the...
Motorized.
There's no motorized vehicles at all, supposed to be on the bike path.
Okay, because we have that in our code, but it's, it's, they have to be human, human-powered.
Right.
And the state changed that recently to, human-powered, it also includes e-bikes up to one of the classes. So we may be preempted on that issue, but I want PD to discuss that, because that's one of the issues we discussed, should we prohibit that, prohibit it on the bike path?
Yeah, because there are still signs up there saying motorized.
Yeah, so that's, and so we can certainly specify that, if that's the direction of the council, but let's hear from PD.
Good evening, Councilmember Napolitanos. As I, as I, in my research, from my reading with, on the county's bike path, from LA County Public Works, they allow class one and class two bicycles on the, electric bicycles on the path, but not class three, so.
Class three, those, the throttle ones?
Yes, sir.
Only, throttle only?
Yes, sir.
So the others are pedal assist?
Yes, sir.
That's new? Okay.
Okay. Counselor Lesser, you're up.
I wanted to follow up on this very issue. We've all gotten an email from a resident who questions why we shouldn't be prohibiting e-bikes on the bike path. And I guess the first question is, why 20 miles per hour? I recognize that that's, I thought in addition to pedal assist, class three e-bikes are 20 miles and above, is that right? Or how, let me just ask the question, how did staff arrive at 20 miles an hour as the speed limit, when that, that can be pretty fast, actually?
Certainly, and it's a great question. When looking at the speeds, we are, we're certainly looking at the types of bicycles, electric bicycles that are allowed on the path, but also looking for some threshold to determine, like, what's, what's, what's kind of fast, what's too fast, and also looking at what are, how, our ability to enforce a speed limit on the bike path. And so part of that calculus is when we're looking at speed limits that are maybe a little bit lower threshold, we might be able to use our, you know, radar devices or lidar devices to identify that black bicycle, you know, is, and rider are speeding, but then our ability to put away that, that radar, lidar, merge into the bicycle path traffic and catch up to that person is not necessarily limited, but it's something that is, requires some effort on the, on our officers in terms of making sure of their own safety, as well as the safety of the cycling public. So we were looking at something that would, you know, clearly be faster than most people are traveling on the path, and something that would be more unsafe and easier to identify and maybe call out some people who are just traveling with the flow of other traffic on the path that are not passing or engaging in unsafe behaviors, that are just riding with the flow of traffic. So finding that balance with what is, you know, too fast, and what would be, what would cost one to have to weave in and out of traffic and things like that.
It's not going to be an enforcement nightmare for the police department? I'm just wondering, is there a realistic expectation that by setting the speed limit, that'll something that in fact will be able, the police department will be able to enforce?
It will certainly pose some challenges, that's certainly for sure, just in terms of the things I've outlined, just in how we determine the speed of a vehicle or a bicycle, and then catching up to it, just like it is on the roadway, but now you're on a bike path with bicycle traffic. So it will certainly be different for us.
At a minimum in Hermosa, I imagine an eight mile per hour speed limit is easier to enforce than a 20, or am I imagining that?
Well, they also have a shared use path, and so I think that there is a need, I think that there's a need for the path to be, have the speed limit be a little lower, because you have cyclists and pedestrians on the same path together. And so something, something lower to provide for the safety of all the users, I think, is appropriate.
Well, you know what they have, too, though? They've set up a couple of speed readers...
Right.
Up on the poles there.
Right.
It's probably our next thing.
So I'm assuming that this larger subjective standard evaluating how safe a rider is riding their bike is going to give greater discretion to the police to cite on both streets, as well as the bike path. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll hold my question now for a second. Mayor Tim Franklin, you can go up there first.
Thank you. I just thought we might add to, to the list is the actual beach. I've seen them down on the, down on the sand, the hard sand.
That's right.
Is it county beach?
Yeah, but aren't we responsible?
We can do it.
But we're responsible for...
Right, of course, law order.
Yeah, it's included as parks, but I think it's better to specify each area.
I'd say the beach, yeah.
Yeah.
Is the coastal commission going to say it inhibits...
The enjoyment, the amenity.
Not if we have enough bike racks.
They might.
Public-serving amenities.
Well, then let the coastal commission come down and write citations.
And Lucemus, to you first.
And then the, the other thing, too, I know technically, you know, this is splitting hairs, but crosswalks, I see a lot of people riding their bikes along the cross, you know, across the crosswalks, and they're supposed to be walking them. If they themselves are crossing a street, you know, with the light or with the pedestrian sign, they have to be walking them. But, you know, so I don't know if we want to include that, and it's part...
The city sidewalks, put that.
Well, I don't know if it's not technically the sidewalk, it's the street, anyway, just up for...
Add it to that bullet point, you said city sidewalks and crosswalks.
It's a common biker maneuver to, if you're blocked off at one side, then you go with the crosswalk on the other.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't, I don't go that way, but maybe it's common for you.
Anybody else? Joe, you still go?
Yeah, and then there's, there was another line on page 699, item number three, about the 20 mile per hour speed limit on the beach bicycle path, Marvin Browdy, pardon me.
He thanks you.
And the walk, and it says that, you go down the second paragraph, it says, "As the council is aware, no pedestrians are allowed on the bike path."
Yeah.
In which case can they be cited?
Yes.
Okay, because that's really a danger, is when people are walking.
Yep.
They have been cited.
Yep.
They have been? Okay, great.
Site roller skaters, too.
Yep.
Makes me mad.
Yeah, roller skaters and skateboards.
Any other questions yet?
Yep, that's, that's it, yes.
Other questions? All right, well, open this up, public comment. There's a question about e-bikes, bike safety, the name of the bike path.
I was just going to say. Mine, too.
Thank you. My only comment, 20 miles an hour in front of the pier? Seems pretty fast to me. So is there, can you do something to slow people down, just like right in front of here, my only comment? Thank you.
Yes, some of the staff already, it maintains the walk-only zone in front of the pier.
Yes.
You may have seen the additional fencing that's up there. You may have seen the additional fencing that's up there.
Did you discuss what happens when they blow through stop signs? Is, is that, was that part of this? I didn't hear properly.
You're here, you're your answer.
So anything that's like that, okay, that's great. I think this is great, and I'm really excited you're doing it. I'm glad the plans are so big.
Thank you, Suzanne. Anybody else here? Martha, anybody on Zoom that wants to talk about this?
Sure.
So we'll close public comment, we'll go to Mayor Protim Franklin first, then Councilman Lesser, then Councilman Hoerth.
So I, I strongly feel that the 20 mile per hour speed limit, as a frequent user of the bike pa, the Marvin Browdy County Bicycle Trail from here to there, whatever, for so many reasons. Number one, you encounter a lot of traffic, particularly on weekends, but just almost about every day now, and especially when the weather's nice. 20 miles an hour, zipping in and out, is just way too fast. It doesn't give people a chance to react, you're getting too close to people who are not on an e-bike and are going slower. It really creates a huge public safety issue. I would recommend 15 miles an hour as being our speed limit. It is a dedicated path, as opposed to Hermosa, which is at 8 miles an hour, but 15 is a lot more reasonable. That way, you can also sometimes just pedal only, regular bicycles, but road bike, you know, what they call road bikes. Those riders can get up to 23, 24, 25 miles an hour as well, and they also become a nuisance. So I think if we ratchet it down to 15, it's just going to be the opportunity to bring more calm to an ever-growing and crowded bike path. And I'm thinking of the kids, too, because, I mean, I, I wouldn't take my smaller children as a parent on the bike path at any time, because it's just so much traffic and so much is happening, and the children are looking at this and looking at that, and they wander. So let's slow that down if we could. The other thing I'd like to, it's just a small point, but in, on page two, where it says, "Safety and operational standards," it says, "Proposed MBMC section contains 20 such rules, including requiring helmets for all riders under the age of 18 years old." Just add properly strapped, because they'll wear the helmets, but it won't be properly strapped, as, as we've seen. And I strongly support this, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lesser.
I want to see, Councilmember Hoerth wants to go first. Would you like to?
Oh, thank you, yeah. I don't have to go first, but I'll take you up on it. I want to thank, I was going to thank you, actually, Councilmember Lesser, for bringing up some of our ordinances as a way to try to address this in a more robust manner. You were the one who, with the city attorney, discovered that, you know, some of our bicycle ordinances hadn't been updated since 1971. So I think this is really a great next step after Mayor Protim Franklin's efforts, which have been widely and rightly touted towards the education of our youth. But I, I'm going to be very proud and support this with, with the different little additions that we've talked about, adding beach to the list of locational restrictions, as well as the Veterans Parkway. I agree with the 15 miles per hour speed limit. It's not only that you wouldn't take your little kids down there to ride the bikes, it's hard to cross the bike path on a Saturday, like down by Fifth Street, you know, where you're not walking by the pier. But I, I really hope that we will make, support this motion that I have seconded, because we're probably one of the only communities to be doing this, and hopefully we'll be leading the way. And hopefully the state will support more bicycle safety, but we've got to do this. So thank you to all who have led these efforts.
Thank you. Councilman Lesser?
First thing I should say is, I grew up in West Los Angeles, and then Los Angeles City Councilmember Marvin Browdy was my councilmember. And he rode his bike as many places as he could, but it was often very difficult in Los Angeles of that era, long ago. But point being, he was someone who really wanted to make multi-moldal modes of transportation real, and really come up with ways that we all could cycle, so it's wonderful that there is this bike path in his honor. We are all seeing the dangerous condition today with so many kids, particularly on e-bikes, that are a known danger. I mean, we just see so many of them who just don't have the training or the intuition of many adults, although some adults also don't have that intuition, to stop at stop signs, to realize the, the present danger. So I support what is going to be happening with this ordinance, which I suspect all of us are going to support, where we need to update our code for the first time, I think it was from 1975, from a 1961 era code to reflect e-bikes. I'm an e-bike owner, however, I respect those that are deeply concerned about the prevalence of, of e-bikes of any kind on the bike path, the Marvin Browdy Bike Path. But for now, I think it's been stated, this is a first pass on an urgency basis to revise our codes, and then there'll be more revisions that can come back later, and at that time we can, we can review this. But I support the proposed amendment for 15 miles per hour on the Marvin Browdy Bike Path, and I support the, thank you.
All right, I'll wrap it up here, folks. You heard us all talk about this. I think we're all in favor of this, but before we get to that call vote, the Assembly Bill 825 by a little sister named Brian, who wants to make a name for herself. He has taken away the original language which restricted e-bikes from all sidewalks in California, stuck it past our own state senator Ben Allen, stuck it past our both, some member Al Marisucci, that I both spoke with, they had no idea when they came back that language had changed. So imagine a bill passes where our police cannot enforce, enforce e-bikes riding down downtown sidewalks, going towards the pier. This bill will strip the city's ability to enforce any bikes on sidewalks and every sidewalk in California. So I urge you all to call. Senator Ben Allen, I'll give it his handy phone number, it's not his cell, Ben, I promise. I did not hand out your cell, Ben. But Senator Ben Allen, 310-318-6994, he wants people to call. And Council, I'm sorry, some member Al Marisucci at 310-375-0691. Lead California Cities is also opposed to AB 825, Brian, they're trying to fight it up there as well. So this is not just our little city. Imagine Carlsbad, all the way down to St. Agar, they all don't want this bill to pass. They all see what's coming, promoting bicycles, e-bikes at the risk of pedestrians. Sacramento, in its finest hour, does this move in the middle of the night, and no one, no one sees it. So with that, we'll do a vote call, please.
Mayor, we should have a motion.
You have a motion, I'm sorry, first by Mayor Protim Franklin, and second by Councilman Hoerth.
So I'll read the title, and it's going to be Urgency Ordinance Number 23-0008-U. An ordinance of the city of Manhattan Beach amending and restating Municipal Code Chapter 3.01, and amending various sections of the municipal code relating to bicycles to clarify and establish safety and operational requirements for electric and motorized bicycles, and declaring the urgency thereof with certain amendments. And.
Happened to me.
If you go to section 3.0103O, T, we'll start with S, we'll add language that the helmet has to be properly strapped. T, we're going to be adding.
15.
Actually, this is S. On the helmets, it's also motorized bicycles, that was just a typo. U, it will be 15 miles per hour on the Marvin Browdy Bike Path, also known as the Beach Bicycle Path, and that's only because in our code, that's what they call it.
Notification.
Adding the beach.
Yes.
As a prohibited area, and the Veterans Parkway.
Chairman Barrett, when is this, we vote tonight, when does it go into effect?
Tomorrow.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm having fun with Councilman, Mayor Protim Franklin.
We had a first and a second. Voting screen, please.
As long as it gets done.
Motion passes 5-0.
So next, is there a motion on the resolution on the fines?
Perfect.
500 for the first infraction, well, the first violation.
I have one quick question.
There's a follow-up question by Councilman Lesser.
Just one quick question. I want to confirm that the police will have some discretion, or what the discretion of the police is with regard to this. New.
The present plan is to treat all as administrative citations, if that answers your question. And really, the misdemeanor aspect, if someone keeps violating the law.
I just want to give the chief an opportunity to address this, if there's any concern, or is the chief on board with this change?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Lesser, can you repeat the question?
Is there any concern by you or anyone in your department on this change in the citation structure?
No concerns. We, it is going to require some education with our staff on just that, this new structure and using more of the administrative citation process than we've really used in the past, especially with our police officers. So there'll be some, some process issues and training that we will, we will have to go through.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else, questions? All right, good. Item L, city council request. I mean, we have to vote, I'm sorry. Do it again.
No, no, this is second.
Voting screen.
Motion passes 5-0.
Councilman Hoerth, you have a question now?
On the, on the next item, item 18.
Here we go. Now, officially, item L, city council request and reports are going to be AB 1224 parts.
No. I had, I had something for item 18. Is that, are we passed?
There's no item 18.
No item 18.
Come later.
Are you still in Italy?
Yes. It's seven in the morning in Italy.
So no city council requests and reports, there'll be one anywhere, that's good. Item, am future items. Press the button. Councilman Hoerth?
Yeah, under your ceremonial for the next meeting, I wanted to add it's National Service Animal Month, potentially to, maybe I'm in the wrong place, but, you know, you're right. See, it says 18 here. Well, that's what I want to do, future items.
I think I sent an email to that.
Yeah.
Put it, we'll put in consent and.
Yeah, just along with the other ceremony, or, you know, at the end, and I just wanted it to be there.
I'll be a second, we'll put in consent for next meeting.
Certify them.
Surface animal.
Service.
Those, you know, service animals that help people.
As opposed to pet therapy.
No, we're not judgment here, no judgment.
Yeah. You good? We have two.
Yeah, so that can be placed on, we don't have to go through a three-step process.
No, thank you.
Anybody else? You're good? City manager report. Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you. None tonight. Thank you.
City attorney report.
None tonight.
Information, item is P 18, there's your 18, and 19, none, 20, none, closed session, we're out. And folks, we have tonight, we're going to adjourn and honor Pete Moffett. Most of you know Pete Moffett, new Pete Moffett, the man that started, besides the Manhattan Cooler days, what we now call the Manhattan Fireworks Event. And his son, Tom, is here to represent the Moffett family. So I'm going to read you, I know everybody knows Pete, there's a picture of Pete and Gwen here behind me. Let me just read out, I could go on for three pages, but I'm going to try to get this in. Everybody take a breath here for a second. Pete Moffett, on May 16, 2023, the world bid farewell to visionary soul Pete Moffett, who touched countless lives with his joyous spirit. Born in Alabama on November 12, 1947, Pete's journey left an indelible mark on all who knew him. Relocating to California in 1984 to chase his dreams, Pete's legacy was profoundly influenced by his wife, Gwen Moffett. She was born and grew up in Manhattan Beach. She stood by his side as an encourager, partner, unwavering fan, infusing his path with strength and support. A dedicated father, Pete's love shaped his twin boys, Tom and Parker. His enthusiasm and support for their pursuits and dreams continues to guide them, inspiring their journeys. Pete's entrepreneurial drive led him to launch the iconic Manhattan Coolers Restaurant. His leadership transformed it into a community haven where friendships blossomed. Pete's commitment to quality resonated through every dish, turning patrons and employees into family. Yet Pete's most enduring legacy was co-creating the Manhattan Beach Holiday Fireworks Show with his wife Gwen. For over three decades, his heart and soul went to this cherished event, uniting the community in celebration. His efforts painted this night sky with unity and color, touching generations. Pete embodied professionalism and community commitment, earning respect and admiration. His tenacious nature endeared him to friends, colleagues, and neighbors. His genuine character left a lasting impression. Through Pete's passing leaves a void, his legacy lives on. Through his sons, his two wonderful daughters-in-laws, eight grandchildren, continued vibrant firework displays, and the spirit of life he fostered, his impact endures. As we mourn, let's also celebrate the remarkable life Pete led. So a moment of silence, please. For those of you who weren't around during Manhattan Coolers, one of the first places I ate in Manhattan Beach, and I definitely miss Pete, I think he touched, like you said, thousands of lives here. My very first or third fireworks show, Pete asked me to become the CFO of the fireworks. I go, CFO? He goes, no, it means chief fundraising officer. That's your job. So my volunteer status changed, and it's gone ever since, but it's something that's made this community what it is, and we owe it all to the Moffett family, to your dad, Tom, and everybody else. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your dad with us. It means a lot. All right, everybody, we're going to adjourn the meeting until our next meeting.
Tomorrow.
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 Yes, Tuesday, 4:00 p.m., Wednesday, 4:00 p.m., our next meeting, and we'll see you there. Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.